Why is your mic already pushed down? Why is this mic already pushed down?
I know.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. A call to order of the June 20th, 2022 Canal Winchester, Canal Work Session. A roll call, please.
Mrs. Amos.
Present.
Mrs. Amos.
Present.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Milliken.
Here.
Mr. Shea.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mrs. Warren.
Here.
Also in attendance, we have Mayor Ebert, Public Service Director Matt Peoples, Development Director Lucas Hare, Finance Director Amanda Jackson, Construction Services Administrator Bill Sims. And before I introduce Bill, I'd just like to welcome everyone here tonight. I feel it's a very great pleasure, a privilege and pleasure to be here first time in our new council chambers. And I just want to thank everyone and thank the city for making this available to us. I think everybody will find it's a lot nicer place than where we were. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sims for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. So as you were coming in tonight, probably saw we were continuing to work on the parking lot here for 45 East Waterloo. Just about had the curbs wrapped up. There's a couple of bits and pieces to work on tomorrow. But here in the next week, 10 days, we'll be seeing the site get graded and stone base go down for that. So we're moving a lot closer now to the parking. And I think hopefully the weather's going to be a little more cooperative for sure the next few weeks. Other than Gill Park, we have come up with a, worked with the contractors to come up with an alternative railing for the playground. So we can get that back on track to get that wrapped up as soon as possible at this point. So that's kind of our last major piece that we can get that open. So I'm expecting really maybe, I was hoping today, but most likely tomorrow, I don't know, schedule on the fabrication of that final railing piece. So we'll hopefully have some dates here very shortly on that. The street program has been underway. The concrete work is basically wrapped up at this point. The contractor's intending to move his paving crews into town the week of July 5th. And they'll actually probably start on Deets Drive and then work immediately into Asher Village and then Tryon Street. So that would be kind of the tail end of the project. But I'll be having essentially the second notices to affected residents going out this week with, you know, with some timeframes to help them adjust a little bit to, you know, be prepared for the work. The renovation of 36 South Pike has started. We completed the demo last week and they started building some of the new pieces of wall that we need. And they're also this week working on the electric and HVAC adjustments that we need to make. So that product's moving right along. It should be a reasonably short duration on that, about eight weeks total. So we're already a couple of weeks into that. So looking forward very much to getting that building, you know, back in use. So on the private side, we have Green Gate subdivision is back to work on sections three and five. And they're currently installing sanitary sewer. They have another two weeks or so on the sewer and then move to water line work. So they'll be out for most of the summer working on the Green Gate project. And at Friendship Kitchen, you've probably seen the MOT set up on Gender Road. They're working currently on the right turn lane into Trillium Avenue. So we've got, probably got four or five weeks of work in for that as well to get that constructed and hopefully get that project wrapped up. Any questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Brings the request for council action under Old and New Business Ordinance 22-015. Clerk, please read the title.
An ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Canal Winchester rezoning approximately 80.402 acres of Franklin County parcel 181-001377 owned by Harriet S. Baker Levin located at 5700 and 5900 Winchester Pike from R Rule and Madison Township to LM Limited Manufacturing.
Mr. Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. This has been on the table for a few weeks now, a few meetings. While the developer worked with council, they tried to make some revisions to the plans. Those revisions have now been made. The developers here this evening would like to give a presentation to council to share those and the current status of the project and the approvals. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jim McGill, who can present you kind of where we are currently.
Thank you.
So Lucas, how do I do that normally? I have my laptop to do the slides? Are you going to?
They'll get it pulled up here momentarily for you.
So am I the first to, geez, this is really strong. So am I the first, gosh, am I the first one to actually present it?
Yes, yes.
That's a lot of pressure. I will say this is the first, most time when I presented, I missed the national championship football game and the national championship basketball game. So because every Monday was one of those things, I'm glad there's hockey tonight. Anyway, well, real quick, as Lucas mentioned, you know, we spent a lot of time, I don't say dramatically revising, but I think that based on different meetings with members of, on the council, I think some of the feedback we had or a lot of the feedback was the architectural quality of it and also the overall layout of the project, meaning how can we make it look aesthetically? Either the building facade or even open space. So that's the things that we really focused on. I'll go through the whole presentation, but a lot of, we presented a lot, so we're trying not to be nauseous and go through it again. If we can flip through quick, we'll go, this key, next slide. Again, this is a slide, I think, let's go back one to that one, back to the site plan. Other way, yeah, I hear you going. Well, that was our presentation, thanks. Yeah, so go to the slide two. So I think a couple of things, yeah, a couple of things here was some feedback we had is, one is obviously along, along Bigsby Road is the complete screening of the, of the truck spots or the dock doors and the trailer spots. So we're always proposing an eight foot berm there. So we'll be able to get an eight or nine foot berm. We slid the building back a little bit. And if we can't do it, we haven't finished some of our sideline studies. But if we can't get it to completely screen to that, then we'll be introducing a cedar fence there or some sort of composite fence to completely screen that. But I think we'll have enough area there if we get approval to go back, when we go back through kind of site plan approval to make sure we can get a high enough berm and with landscaping, we can completely screen that. Then on the, along the Winchester Pike, we had some discussions on that. At least my opinion architecturally was no reason to completely screen the front of the building because if we're going to spend money to make a nice facade, we don't want to say you can't see the facade. So what we had there, we did slide the building back. We have a 30-foot basic green freight or transitional yard from the right away. And there we'll get a three or four foot berm there with heavy landscaping along that. But I think more importantly, as we'll get into this, is then we also introduced a significant amount of articulation glass along that to give it a better feel. So my personal opinion is, if I get from doing this, I think if we're going to spend the money and you're going to see it, let's be able to see it, not block it with all the burning and landscaping. So we can go to that. Yeah, and I think that this is obviously how our plan lays out. Real quick, I think one thing I kind of skipped over is, you see what we have here at the, at the southeast corner. So we always had this area that the darker green is a wetland area, which is going to stay in place. We are impacting a small portion of the wetland on the east side. These are non-jurisdictional wetlands. We've got the determination from the Army Corps. We still have to get a permit from the Ohio EPA, but we're impacting, I believe, about an acre of that wetland. But more importantly, you can see there is just all the open space we have. That whole area is about 11 acres. So at that corner, it's going to be, it's going to be very, you know, open there with wetlands. And that the little circles you see there are, we're going to introduce walking trails there. So they'll probably be just crushed stones with landscaping. We do have to install a sidewalk all the way down Winchester Pike. So if people are walking down there, they're, you know, I guess we haven't figured out mechanically, you know, how we, if this is something we donate to the, to, you know, Canal Winchester, how we do it. I don't have an issue on there, but we just got to figure out insurance things if people own the property and using it. But we can figure it out, that's just, that's just mechanical type things. So that will have 11 acres there. And the other thing too is up, if you look up at the northwest corner, we do have another big open green space there. So we will landscape that. The architect didn't show that, but that'll be landscaping too. So at least when you come down, when you're coming down Winchester Pike going southeast, that'll be heavily landscaped too. So at least you won't see the building if you get right on top of it. So we can go to the next slide. This is a, this is kind of our, what the building one will look like, the bigger building with the, with the berm. And this is kind of, I'd say, more mature landscaping. So probably, probably won't look like that day one. But the berm is going to be higher than that. So that's an old berm that we had, or old presentation that we had. But that's a good idea of what it's going to look like with along going down Bigsby Road. And this is the, the new elevations that we have for building two, which is the Winchester Pike building. So a couple of things here is, one is we've introduced significantly more glass. So the, the big thing we got out of it is on both building one and building two, anything that fronts on Winchester Pike, that facade, and I'll call it the east facade, even though it runs northeast or, or south, southeast and northwest. But let's just call it east to make it easier. But along that one, and then also on the bigger building, the cross dock, along the east facades will have roughly 9% glass, which is a significant amount of glass, which is like the main entrances in here. But then also we have clear, dirty glass, so we're bringing natural light in there. The big thing too is we're going to do stamped concrete for the entrances. So it breaks up kind of the smooth precast look. And then we're, you can see as we go through, and we have elevations here, but we tried to do that where you're breaking up the mass either through glass, through reveal, so it doesn't look like a flat panel, you know, industrial building. So if we can go to that. I know these are, these are sometimes hard for me to read, but this gives you an idea of how it looks from all different things. So I guess if you guys have questions on after this, we can go through that. But I don't want to spend a ton of time there, but I think it shows you all the elevations. The important one is that if you look at the, I believe, the bottom, is the bottom one, the east elevation.
Yeah, the bottom's east.
Yeah, bottom is the east elevation. So that's building one. So I think what's important there again is you're going to see the amount of glass. That's what you're going to be seeing from Winchester Pike. And then building two is, the, the, the top two are the most important ones, the east elevation. So you can see, we set this up as a three tenant building, so kind of 100,000 square foot each. So you have really prominent glass on both ends of the building and then a prominent middle entrance with glass in there. So again, we, we kind of went through this, so we can skip that, since the berm exhibits for the, for the Bigsby Road. I, I think the, obviously there's been lots of discussions of, you know, lots of discussions on a lot of things on this. But I think the, the big thing is on this is that there's, I'd say, four different things that we're doing here in regards to road improvements. The first one is, is on Bigsby Road that we need to widen in front of our frontage. We need to take that. North Point did it at least in front of their phase one. They took it to 28 feet. And with our project, and they're going to be taking it, I think Lucas's 28 feet is a requirement on phase two. We need to take it to 36 feet. So it's going to be a three lane road from our, basically from, it's part of Bigsby already to the, to the, to the east is already 36 feet. But there'll be improvements all the way along, basically along our frontage where it's not going to be 36 feet. So if we get approval, we coordinate that with North Point. So that's about 300,000 to that. The area where we're spending a significant amount of money is on Winchester Pike. And this keeps evolving and dealing with Franklin County. So Winchester Pike, we have to do a 285-foot left turn lane. So that's going to be going northwest bound. So with that, we're going to have the taper lanes, which, so you're basically going to start widening the road and then you have to taper back down. So it's about, I believe it's about 1,700 feet that we have to do that. We also, what the county's going to make is do too, is we need to meet, the road has to meet current county standards. So we have to do a four foot shoulder all the way down, all the way down the road. So right now, I think that shoulder is probably a foot. So we have to redo the shoulder. And then the other thing they're making is do too, for the area, I mean, again, this, they haven't told us, we, we have not submitted anything to them, but these are just the feedback we keep getting from them. So every time I ask for this, add something to it. So we also need then too, is all the area we're working, so that 1,700 feet, they're going to make us resurface that whole area because they don't want it to be new pavement on top of old pavement. So that whole area from, you know, our 1,700 feet in front of our, which is probably about half that frontage there will be brand new asphalt on that. So. So then the other one is on, on Gender Road, and I'll go through the numbers. But Gender Road, we're going to make the contribution of a quarter of a million dollars, which will go to whatever the general fund is there, which will go towards those Gender Road and Winchester Pike improvements. And then we did increase our proposal or our contribution to the Big V Road study of $100,000. So that could need to be used for engineering studies or whatever, you know, they'd go towards Canal Winchester to, to part of their funding too, to get the intersection done. So we can flip through, we don't need to go and, we don't, this is all, you keep flipping, this is all the detail I talked about. So we can keep going through that. That's the 250, that's the $100,000 there. So this is kind of a summary of what we're spending. These are actually dollars that we're spending. So the 900,000, and I hope it's just 900,000. The 300,000 towards Bigsby Road and the 125,000 for sidewalks along Winchester Pike and Bigsby Road. Plus we're donating the right of way, we'll donate the right of way along Bigsby to, to Canal Winchester. And we'll donate the right of way, or excuse me, along Bigsby. And then Winchester Pike will donate the right of way to, to the county for, to basically to meet the current standards. So the next one, and then all these are, we go back to the last one. And this is what we talked about here. So I guess we talked about the 250 to 100,000. The other thing we do, we made a contribution to the community benefit fund of $400,000 to go towards whatever, that'll go towards Canal Winchester, whatever you deem necessary. So from our standpoint, whether it goes to traffic or improvements or that, it's, you guys can decide how you want to handle that or use that money. Then finally here is, I mean, a couple of things too on our project is, you know, right now, the utilities, the water and sanitary are south of our property on Ranger Road. So we need to extend both water and sewer up to our site. And then we just put in there too, because obviously you guys paid to get the utilities over, paid to get the utilities there. And when we connect into them, we'll have water and sanitary connection fees of $472,000, which goes to, goes back to the city. And this is, I thought was good, we, this is a presentation we want to do here is the revenue projections. And I think what's important here is, you know, because if we get approval, we will come back in for the CRA and for the tax abatement. My thoughts important here is, what we calculate is, I think, if you look at the green boxes, the first one is the land taxes. So when we buy the property, there's still going to be land taxes. And obviously land is not, is not abated. So we, we only get abavements on, on, on the, the personal property. So there will be $180,000 a year of land taxes. I don't want to oversell because your portion, the city's portion is mini schools. I don't even represent it, it's not worth showing. But obviously for the school district, that's about $91,000 a year for the school district. I think what's important is when you look at the, the, the third box there, that's a projected taxes with no tax abatement, which is significant, but I think we, with the bear in mind is at the end of, whatever the length of the abatement is, but we're hoping it's 15, is that, you know, this thing generates a million two in today's dollars of taxes. And I think we all know taxes usually go up, so it's significant dollars once the abatement burns off. And then here we also talked, we basically mirrored the, at least the multifamily work, there's a pilot payment in the school district of 12 cents. So if we, if we go to the next page, I think what this shows, if you look at the bolded box at, at projected jobs, 300 jobs, that's a payroll of 12 million, which is 240,000 of income taxes. So Canal Winchester gets 75% of that, $180,000. The school district gets 25%, which is 60,000. Plus they get the pilot, which is 112, and then land taxes, which they do get, which is 51, 52% of the tax bill. So the school district is getting $266,000 a year, you know, basically for the 15-year period until, until the abatement burns off. So we can go to the next one. I'm not going to spend any time going through, we don't think this causes a lot of traffic. And we've talked about that. I think if you can go to page, keep flipping through. I think this was an important one is that, you know, there's a lot of discussion about multifamily and what you're seeing in multifamily. And we pulled this from one of the traffic reports for the multifamily. And I think what's important is that this multifamily project, which I think was either Lamp Easter, I've been here so long, but it's, it was generates, for 36 acres, generates more traffic than ours will for the entire 80 acres. So you have double the amount of traffic from multifamily, which makes sense. You have, you know, two people driving all the time. And the one thing too with ours is it's pretty consistent. It's people showing up in the morning and then, and then leaving in the afternoon. So. So I think it just kind of in summary is, I think, we just want to put here, you know, so the property, you know, we've talked about, it can either go to Columbus for industrial or it's going to be high density affordable housing. The property across the street, which is owned by Harriet Levin, is going for affordable housing. The other thing too, an industrial, the piece with, I don't know what you guys call it, actually the Winchester Pike piece, which is where the car wash is, which is under contract right now. They have not gone to Columbus City Council, but it went through, I call it Plan Commission, but that's not Columbus Council. But it was approved 6-0 by Plan Commission. So now it's going to council. So I can't say council will still support it, but it didn't have any opposition at Plan Commission. We talked about that too, that our, these industrial projects generate significantly less traffic than multifamily does. Again, on the income side is, you know, we project that this will generate with 300 jobs, 250 million in income over 15 years to, to the city and almost $4 million that goes to the school district. We're making, again, $750,000 in contributions for road improvements in the, in the community projects. And we went through some of this here. So we, we think we've tried to listen here, made a lot of financial contribution. We're doing a lot of offsite improvements, you know, submitting a significant amount of money in architectural upgrades and, and also the contributions. So we hope that it's, is received by the.
By the city.
Or well received by the city. So I don't know if there's questions or if you want.
Yeah, are you done? Lucas, do you have anything to add?
So just on the, the ordinance in your packet, so there's been some changes made to that ordinance since the last meeting to help codify some of these changes that were made. And so when you look at the ordinance that was written initially, it considered the, on section two, letter A, that previously said a six-foot mound because the mound along Bigsby Road was initially specified as six to six and a half feet. And that's been changed to reflect an eight-foot mound, which would match up with the same mounding that we're requiring along Bigsby Road for the, the shot property. And so that was the change that took place in letter A. In letter B, there was text added. And so in that letter B states that all improvements recommended in the Bigsby Road Industrial Traffic Impact Study dated February 2022 regarding Bigsby Road, Winchester Pike, and Bigsby Road, Winchester Pike intersection are implemented. And then what was added was this condition shall further require the developer will contribute its proportional share as determined by Columbus City Council to improvements necessary at the Gender Road and Winchester Pike intersection. That was included previously, but what was added was, which shall be no less than $250,000. So that requires at least a $250,000 contribution to that intersection improvement as well as adding in there that $100,000 would go towards the Bigsby Road and US 33 improvements. And then letter C was added, which was not previously included in the text, that any building constructed on the site shall have the eastern elevation consist of a minimum of 9% window glazing when that elevation exceeds 300 feet in width. And so, you know, with this being a triangular parcel, it's, you know, can be debatable what elevations are east. So this is the eastern elevation, which would face, the, the north building would be the, the face Winchester Pike. So along the Winchester Pike frontage. Or for the, the south building as presented in this plan, it would be the east elevation of the building that faces east. So because we're not necessarily approving this plan, you need to write the text to say the east elevation. So that would cover that for any other building that is adopted there. Because we're considering the Winchester Pike frontage as an east elevation.
Can either of you remind me, the property that's labeled as Cobbleton, that is already in the city of Columbus? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Hare, do we need to include anything else from the presentation? Any of the other statistics or promises that are being made in this ordinance?
That would cover the transportation improvements. This, this would recover all the, the cost associated with the transportation improvements. The utility improvements would be covered as part of just the requirements for, you know, connecting to the utilities. So right, they're, they're responsible for extending those utilities at their cost and the capacity these are, are laid out as, as per our schedule. The only thing that's not included in there is anything in regards to the community benefit agreement. So that would be handled in the future through the community reinvestment area agreement for this parcel.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then the $1.2 million that he talks about in tax abatement for the community, are you able to explain a little bit of just what that means? Of what it'll mean in 15 years versus what it means now?
Sure. So city council previously approved an economic development agreement in regards to this property that contemplates that it'll be a 15-year, 100% property tax exemption. What this is stating and what Mr. McGill has put together is, is an estimate of what those taxes might be. And so we don't know how the auditor, the county auditor who values buildings, we don't know exactly what those buildings are going to be valued. But you can take a good guess on per square foot value just based on other buildings in the county. So that's what this has come up with, based on the square footage, based on the, on the values that you see in the market. That's what's estimated, that these buildings would be assessed at, you know, $44 million when completed. And so then when you look at what the, the real estate taxes would be annually, if those were paid today at today's rates, that would be 1.22 million annually that would go in total real estate taxes. And Canal Winchester, approximately 55% of that in the Franklin County Madison Township portion goes to the schools. So 55% of 1.22 million, someone at math can do that quicker than I can, but 750,000 or so. It wouldn't be quite that high, but it'd be 650,000, I would say, that would go to the schools. And so that's there. And then what's below that is a pilot payment. So what we've done in previous agreements is a payment in lieu of taxes that goes to offset some of the schools, some of the revenue that they were foregoing by giving the exemption. And so in this case, it's, it's 12. And so in this case, it's, it's 12 cents per square foot, which is $112,000 is what they would be proposing. You know, that's something that the school districts would need to review and something we would enter into an agreement with the school districts on. So this is a proposal. This is not necessarily what that final number would be. That would be subject to a school compensation agreement that would be agreed, would be reviewed and agreed by the school board.
Do we have that scheduled to go to the school board yet?
No, because there's not a potential project here.
Okay.
And so once this is approved and they're moving into the next steps, if it is approved, then that's when you would start, you know, working with the school district and seeing if there's the ability to offer an exemption here of more than 50%. Because when you offer an exemption of more than 50%, that's when you need to negotiate the agreements with the schools.
Thank you. One more, one last question. The multifamily housing that we were talking about, the ones that are already slated, and we'll dive into those a little deeper here in a minute, but are those developers of the multifamily and the other industry that's going in, are they being asked to contribute to gender road because we don't have, they're not coming through us necessarily? So are they contributing just as much, if not more?
The, the city of Columbus is requiring some developments to contribute to that intersection. So, you know, the, the development that Mr. McGill referenced, the Becknell Industrial, that went before the Columbus Development Commission in May. And the recommendation of the Development Commission was that they contribute to the, the cost of a proportional share of that intersection, which was 200,000 plus. I don't recall the specific figure, but it was more than $200,000 that they were being asked to contribute. And that building is approximately 500,000, but it's just, you know, the majority of the traffic, there's a lot more of the share of the traffic would come through that intersection just based on its location.
Is it typical for multifamily housing developments so to pay into that?
In Canal Winchester, it would be. I'm not sure that the city of Columbus looks at this site as contributing to that intersection. So when we, when we took the traffic studies to them, they said they didn't need to review the study because this, this specific development wouldn't contribute traffic to the intersection. It's outside of their radius that they typically were requiring your contributions.
Right. It's, and we all know it's going to come through that intersection though, a lot of it.
Correct. But they're, they, according to their traffic review standards, it's outside of the range, so the distribution is harder to justify.
Okay. Guess we'll agree to disagree with them on that one.
But our, our requirement is that they are required to contribute to that. And how we would handle that is we would establish an agency fund similar to what we have at Meyer, where they would contribute those dollars. So it's the same thing we've done for Sheets. We're requiring them to contribute to that intersection of Winchester Pike and gender road. We're requiring the North Point contribution to go into that. So we'll, we'll hold those funds until Columbus is ready to do the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? I guess I'll just mention, I, I think it's, goes back to the same issues that I have with this and the risk analysis that we do is that, and I think Councilwoman Amish just pointed out with the conversation, if we allow this to go to Columbus, you can see they, they would require the contribution to a lot of these projects that we would require to help these intersections. And we've got the evidence that Columbus Development Council approved 6-0, a 630,000 square foot warehouse next to Wyler's Chevrolet. So I think the proof is in the pudding in that, that they, they would move on this and I think move quickly. So, anything else? All right. Mr. Boggs, I don't think we need a motion as needed or, but I noticed there were some changes to this. There's some additions to this legislation that Lucas mentioned, the three points that might not be in the old text. How do we handle that?
Right. Mr. Clark, because this ordinance has already been referred on to full council, you do not need to move from this body to put it on the full council. When we get to this ordinance during the council meeting this evening, you'll have a motion to remove it from the table. And then if that moves forward, then a motion to amend to the June 20th version.
Okay.
And then a motion to adopt.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Brings us to OTH 22-010, 2023 Tax Budget Presentation. I think that's Ms. Jackson.
All right. Whoa, that is loud. I want to start off this evening by letting council know that we are actually required to hold a public hearing for this tax budget. Apparently, I did not advertise it when I thought I did. So we are holding the official public hearing on July 5th, but I do want to go through some of this very quickly with you this evening. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. Hopefully, you've had a chance to kind of look at this in the last two weeks. So we're going to do a very high-level overview tonight, and we will dive into a lot more detail in two weeks. But hopefully, this will get you thinking a little bit more about what is included in this tax budget. And again, questions today, questions in the next two weeks, questions at the July 5th meeting, whenever I'm available. Okay? All right. Most of the slides in this presentation are going to be sort of informative for you, especially those of you who are new to council. But I, so I'm going to go through them rather quickly, but I can email this out to you when we are done. We are required to do a tax budget every year, and it has to be approved by July 15th. As I mentioned, we do have to hold a public hearing. And then after that, upon adoption, it has to be filed with the county auditor, and we have until July 20th to file it. Essentially, what the tax budget is doing is we are estimating revenue that we expect to receive next year. Okay? The purpose of doing this is to allow the county budget commission to adjust tax levies. We don't have any voted debt, so our tax levy is not going to change, but we are still required to go through this whole process. One of the other things that I want to point out is that second bullet point there that says to set the limitation of appropriations for the next fiscal year. So we have to file not only our expected revenue, but also our appropriations with the county. And they cannot, the estimated appropriations cannot exceed the estimated resources. This is to make sure we don't overspend. Okay? We're going to talk about the general fund. This is our largest and least restrictive fund. Basically, we can pay for anything legal out of the general fund. The revenues in this fund are derived from taxes, not just income taxes, but real estate taxes as well, licenses, fees, permits, charges for services, and some state funding. This is a screenshot of a portion of the tax budget that is in your packet this evening, talking about these local taxes. Again, we have our real estate taxes, our income taxes, and other local. And I've defined what, what constitutes other local taxes there for you at the bottom of this slide. You will see that our current year estimated income tax is 7.95 million, and next year we are estimating 8.5. Here is a good graph of income tax collections over the year. So the very dark maroon is what we have actually collected. The 2022 graph is showing you what we have collected through the end of May. Okay? You can also see what we had originally budgeted in that year. We do collect more than we have budgeted for. And also where we're projecting 2022 to come in. Now, keep in mind, we're only six months into the year. That is subject to change technically, or generally speaking, the last six months of the year are not as heavy on income tax collections, because as you all know, filing D date is in April. So we get all of our, the majority of our income tax, the larger receipts come in in the beginning of the year. All right. So why are our budget, why is our budgeted income tax revenue lower than our 2021 actual? We're always very conservative. Those of you who've been on council for a while know this, that we don't like to budget more than we realistically think we're going to bring in. We'd like to be lower than that so that we aren't overspending. We want to have that healthy fund balance to do some of these projects that we have been planning for over the years. We also don't know the full effect of the new businesses in town and what income tax revenue they're going to bring to us. So again, we don't want to overbudget, assume that they're going to bring in more than they did. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we've only seen six months of collection in 2022 thus far. So we are able to update all of these revenue numbers as we get closer to the end of the year. And we will do that based on what we see actually coming in. I wish we had a crystal ball, knew where we were going to end the year, but none of us do. So this is a snapshot in time and will be updated as needed once we get into the fall. Real estate taxes, so our city millage is 2.0, as I mentioned. This will not change. Just because the, the taxes you pay as a property owner may increase, it is not because of an increase in our millage. Okay? We have no voted debt, and I probably sound like a broken record saying that. The changes that you might see as a property owner are going to be based on the value of your property. Okay? So if your value increases or decreases, your taxes are going to increase or decrease. As a city, we're looking at all of the taxable property as a whole, and sometimes, you know, it'll increase, it'll decrease. We've been very fortunate, we've seen a lot of increases over the years. We have had a lot of development, both in the residential and in the commercial side. So the revenue that we receive is also affected by the timing of our residents and business owners or property owners making their payments. We get two lump sums every year from each of the county auditors, and those are based on a specific date. If you didn't pay by that date, we may not see your money until the next year. So, you know, just because we know how much our taxable base is and how much is billed out by the county auditor doesn't mean we're going to get every dime of that, that year. Okay? Hopefully, that makes sense. Also, in the general fund, revenue is revenue from other governments. A lot of these are based on calculations and fees that are set in the revised code. We do get some idea from other governments how much we should expect in the next fiscal year, which is where those estimates are coming from. They are also based on historical collections in some cases. And then finally, this is sort of the, I guess, other than income taxes, the meat of our revenue in the general fund. I did define for you what goes into each of those categories on the tax budget. This is not all-inclusive. There are going to be some smaller things in there that I just really aren't worth us spending a whole lot of time on. The largest of the revenue sources you see up there is going to be the fines, licenses, and permits. That is where all of our development revenue goes, as well as our court fines. Those are probably the two most common things that you would be aware of. Charges for services is very small. Basically, that is our pool and any rental, whether it's community center, a park, et cetera. So our total budget of revenue for 2023 is $10,792,750. We also have to look at the expenditures in the general fund. Okay? And you'll see this later on, and I've said it before, and I'm going to say it again. These are not final expenditures for 2023 and will change. Okay? So on the tax budget, when you look at it, you'll see that they are grouped basically into four groupings, salaries and benefits, contract services, operation and maintenance, capital outlay. In 2023, our revenue equals our expenditure. That means we're not dipping into our fund balance. Okay? Again, this is more just for your information about which departments within the city fall into each one of those categories as defined in the tax budget. Very quickly, in the expenditure numbers that are included in that ordinance, salaries and benefits, there is a, an increase in salaries of 3.5% budgeted for all employees. And we are expecting a large increase in our healthcare premiums. That, we will get a final number towards the fall, and we will adjust accordingly when we bring final appropriations to you. Some of the large contract services that you will see in the general fund budget, the sheriff, our pool management company, our development and construction contracts, that does not include the physical construction of a road or anything like that. That is purely engineering and inspections and things along those lines. And then income tax collection fees, you know that we have a third-party tax administrator. We do pay them for their services, and that is based on the amount of revenue that we bring in. So that 8.5 million times 3% is where we got the $255,000. Included in the operation and maintenance line items are your typical smaller expenditures, office supplies, utilities, small equipment purchases, if we need to replace a keyboard or something along those lines. Capital outlay are going to be your real big ones. So in 2023, we have included a million dollars for the street and sidewalk program. We have $75,000 programmed for trees, $40,000 for some things at the pool. Per our contract with Fairfield County, we will purchase an SUV for the sheriff's department. And then each year, we have some IT replacements, computer upgrades, things like that that need to occur. All right. Our total budgeted expenditures, same as our revenue, as I mentioned before. Also, a little note at the bottom, not final. Broken record again, not final. Okay? All right. Very quickly, special revenue funds. These account for any type of specific revenue that we are legally restricted or committed to spending on a specified purpose. Okay? I know that's kind of a mouthful, but there's a listing of all of our special revenue funds. Again, I'm not going into dollar amounts in this presentation, but this is where the money in each one of those funds comes from. So if you have specific questions about a revenue source and what it can be used for, please feel free to stop me. Our general obligation fund, this is where we pay for all of our debt, excluding anything that is water or sewer related. Those come directly out of those funds. And the McGill Park lease payments and the McDorman Building lease payments, lease purchase payments, those come out of the general fund. So in 2023, we are going to take $693,000 directly from the general fund, put it into this general obligation fund and pay our debt. It's just the way I have to account for it. Even though the money's coming from the general fund, I have to put it into this fund in order to write the checks. And then very quickly, in the water and sewer funds, we are increasing, or excuse me, projecting an increase in revenue, user revenue, based on our historical collections and the fact that we know that there has been development here. And we have budgeted our expenditures to equal what we expect to receive in revenue. Down at the bottom is a graph of where our fund balances are over the last several years. You can see that sewer fund has increased pretty significantly. And as you're all aware, we have a very large project in the works for the sewer plant. So some of that money is going to come in handy when comes time for that. So I know that was very quick, but as I mentioned, we will go into a lot more detail on July 5th. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Yes, Mr. Shea?
That headworks project, aren't we getting a 0% EPA loan from that?
So the only thing we have applied for, if I recall correctly, Matt, is for design?
Planning only.
Okay. Planning only at this point.
Okay. Wasn't there a program though where we could get?
It's, so our, what our plan to do is to go from a planning loan, roll it into a design loan, roll it into a construction loan.
Construction loan.
So it'll be all packaged together. And there are, and I don't recall the 0%.
It's very low.
It's low.
Very low.
For us, but I don't think it's zero.
I think the, perhaps the design or the planning one was zero, but the construction loan, I believe, does have a small, very small, less than 1% interest rate.
Well, and what rates are doing, I mean, would we be better off to hold that cash and take the lower rate, the EPA from those sewer balance funds and not use that money and keep it there for other emergencies?
I mean, that's definitely something worth discussing. Where I just don't think we're far enough along in the planning and design process to make that decision at the moment. But yes, definitely, once we get closer, we can certainly look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further?
Oh, I got one more.
Yes.
12% on the health insurance.
Will it realistically be that?
I think you're underestimating it.
I didn't, I, I will turn that over to Mr. Peoples.
I really do. I mean, just everything I'm seeing at work coming across my desk, I mean, I'm seeing anywhere from, you know, 20 to 40% increases on things. And I just want to make sure that we're, we've got that 20% number in the back of our head, because in my mind, it would be realistic.
So when we do our, when the consortium does our, our rating for, for the, for the, sorry, for the next year, it, we'd look at an 18-month, it's an 18-month look back. So the first six months of this year have been pretty good. And last year, we ended up with, with a zero across the board. So, so if we factor in all of last year's and then the first six months of this year, trend, just healthcare inflation is about 8 to 10% is what we factor in. So we're hoping that that 12% is, is going to be a good number.
Well, Ron, is the consortium that we're part of, it is a self-funded pool or is it like?
It's self-funded. It's self-funded.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. That brings us to OTH 22-011, 2022 Pool Update. Mr., I assume Mr. Peoples?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Clark. I just kind of want to give an update on happening so far at the pool. If you recall, we made some changes to the admissions policy where we would require that everyone who just comes in the pool, whether it be a membership or not, or a day pass, has logs in, they have to purchase it online before they come to the pool. Getting the word out on that has been very difficult. We've had a lot of people standing right at the gate going through the process. It does seem to be getting a little bit better as we keep on going through with the repeat customers coming back, they do see what's going on. Last week, no, I'm sorry, on the membership side of things or on the, on the admissions, we have had a couple of technology quirks that go on that we've had to work along with, but those seem to be isolated with that. Sometimes there's no rhyme or reason, one person, you know, comes through and, and is able to get on, on through the, through the website with, with the day pass, and the next person struggles with it. So there's a little bit of user error that goes along with that, but then there, we did have a little bit of technology issues as well. But last week, we started getting a little bit of the, the problems we had last year at the pool with some behavior issues. Obviously, it was very hot last week, and that, that usually leads to some behavior at the pool. I was there quite a bit, Director Jackson, Stacy Williams, Rick Brown. We've all been there, taking, trying to take care of a few things with that. I know Director Jackson was in the, in the concession stand, I think, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, it was, it was very hot and very busy, so we're just in there helping out. Some of the, the behavior problems, the ones that we kind of had last week, most of them, I guess, I think center around adolescent males. When you get a group of them together, they start acting up, but that's not always the case. We did have a early, I think, early twenties couple, they got into a domestic fight there. So we have, and the good thing about the admissions policy we have, we have suspended their accounts, so they are no longer welcome at the pool. And we trespassed them as well because the, the incident started inside the pool and spilled out to the outside, so they've been trespassed from that. We had a, just some other, that type of thing. I was, I personally kicked out four people, that including that is a same kid, I think, three times, that keeps on showing up, not really sure how, but we're working to trespass him as well. And then those, those were day passes, but I've also just suspended, last week I suspended a kid for a week who hasn't membership. So, you know, going, going to an all, all memberships only is not a cure-all for everything. You know, it does, it does present challenges of Mary Ebert, Director Jackson and I, we had a discussion, along with Stacy Williams, I had that discussion last week on, on whether we want to enact that again. If you would have asked me last Wednesday night, it would have been a no-brainer, we were doing it, just because of everything that we've done, everything we went through last week. I'm, you know, going through, we had a really good Thursday and Friday. Obviously, the weekend wasn't as warm and hot as what it was in midweek. You know, I, I think some of the suspensions and, and that type, and some enforcement definitely helps out, the word gets out. I did it with the one kid who's a member, I did it right there in front of about eight of his friends and, from what I understand, one of his ex-girlfriends. So maybe a little bit of embarrassment goes a long ways along with that. Word gets out as well that we're not doing that. We've, the kid we kicked out was with a group of, of teens, and, you know, they got the word as well. I don't know if I've seen them as much, you know, just whether, whether we enforce that. We also started, I think there was some discussion when we, when we did the raid ordinance of having a, what I'll call an adult presence, and, and that's no means trying to insult the managers over there who are, who are adults, but they are young adults, and they don't have, some of, some of them don't have, really have the experience. I know the one, one of the kids I kicked out wouldn't, wouldn't listen to the, to the female guard over there who was an adult, or I'm sorry, female manager. So when I went over there, it's a little bit different story as, as far as them complying. It was still very, very hesitant to comply, but, but nevertheless, we got that done. But last week, as we started going through, and many of you know, Jack Denson works for us in the, as a, in the urban forestry department over the, over the summer. He's a middle school PE teacher, so he knows just about every kid that's in there. We walked around there, I think it was on Wednesday night, it was the first night we went in. Everyone's, "Hey, Mr. Denson, hey, Mr.," just, yeah, "I remember you," and, you know, bigger, now that they're bigger and that type of thing. He, he's a presence as well, and, you know, he's a very good presence over there. He's very calming, he has a very good demeanor, and he's great with, with those age of children that they come in there, especially the boys, he, you know, with the, with the PE class that he teaches, and he gets them all hyped up and then has to calm them down right before they take off to another class. So he's, he's well-versed in that. So we brought him in as well, just for a little bit, just to have someone there. You know, we, we did get some comments, some email and phone calls on, on probably two, or Wednesday, Thursday type of thing, of some of the people saying this, "It's happening again, it's the same thing it was last year." But then they also said, "But I did notice that you were escorting someone out of the, of the pool." We've had the sheriffs walking through on, on first shift. Second shift is a little bit more difficult with the, with the, as busy as they are, but I had someone stop me when I went in there on Friday and said, "Hey, I saw the, saw the sheriffs in here, you know, great job, we appreciate it." And those are the parents of the, of the littler kids that are going through there. So, you know, hopefully, we're, we're actually going to take a look at what another pool does and kind of what the challenges they've had. Our neighboring communities and their pools, they've had the problems, they've already made some changes that go along through it. So I, I like what we did, but, you know, there, there might be some more tweaks that go through it. You know, I, I hate to do the, the members only, and only because it, the, the, some of the, the parents that I've talked to of the, of the littler kids, you know, that, that means a lot to them, and the disappointment even when, you know, they had to set it up, even getting, you know, seeing them just wait for 15 minutes, you know, patience, a little patient has with the, with the littler kids. You know, and then a couple, just a couple of people I talked to, it was just, it would be very disappointing if we would have had to go to members only. And again, like I said, that is not going to control all of the problems.
Mr. Peoples, Mr. Denson is fabulous on urban forestry, but does he want to manage a pool?
Manage a pool? I don't think so.
Just thinking out loud.
Yeah, yeah, so he, he was over there, we, I, he, I had him, when we talked about this, we, we kind of had him in the back of our mind as, no one would go through. The guy, he just loves to work as well, he's very well-respected, not here, out, they said, at the school, but, you know, but from the kids, you know, he, he knows a couple of names that we had ticked off, he goes, "Yep, no, no, no." And that's usually not a good thing when he knows some of the ones that are the, more in trouble. But like I said, we talked to him when he first came back on, you know, seeing if he was, would be interested in doing something like that, and we did pull the trigger last week. It's only an hour, two hours, you know, four to, four to 6:30, something, four to 7:00. Those are the type of things when the problems really start. You know, he gets off at 4:00 and is able to go over there. I don't think he was there at all over the weekend, but like I said, it was, it was much cooler weather, and it does just seem to be those afternoons that, that we have the problem.
Last question, Madison Township, what's the options of calling them and starting to ask them to come through on a regular basis?
They have been there, I'm, they walked through, I'm not sure what the story was, but I did have a report that they were there, which is great. I, I don't know what that would be, whether they can schedule something to come through or not. You know, we can certainly reach out to them and tell them they're more than welcome to walk through anytime that they want.
And Mr. Clark, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they were looking at adding a second shift person when we originally had conversations with Madison Township. So they were supposed to be bringing a second shift person that would be more in Canal Winchester during the week. So maybe it's something that we start asking them to exercise the option to cruise through there several times and?
A lot of times, just about every day last week, there was a sheriff's cruiser sitting in across from Guyler Park in that little, little driveway for the pump station. So that's a nice presence as well. They can't see everything that's going on in there, but at least they're just a, a second away if there is something that happens.
Mr. Peoples, I had a parent comment to me about a substance abuse issue that their daughter witnessed. Are you aware of any reports?
I, I did hear something, a, a parent reported there was a, an odor in the parking lot. I'm not sure if that's the same thing, but, you know, I did get that report, you know, but nothing else.
Mr. Peoples, I just want to say thank you to the city staff for being on-site at the pool. I think that's, that's huge for one. Also, Sergeant Walker, again, I, I've noticed the, the cruiser's sitting there across from the pool. I think that's, to be noticed is a big thing as well. I know we've talked before about some of the issues we kind of had on opening week. What, what kind of presence do you guys have there in the office during opening week? I mean, are you there, is somebody there all day? Or, just because I think it would, it would help for some of the issues that we had if we had somebody there.
We were there an awful lot.
I figured you would.
That opening week, just because it was a new system that we put through. You know, it was Memorial Day weekend, I think we opened the Thursday before Memorial Day, which is really not typical of us. We usually open that, that Friday or Saturday, so we get, we gave, it was a little bit cooler than, if I recall as well, on, on opening day, so it was a, a soft opening, if you will. So, but, but we were there quite a bit. It, it is people getting used to doing it, you know, the, one of the, one of the gate attendants made a, the QR code, and we put that out there, and that definitely helped out a lot, and, you know, they're working on signage, and, you know, there's, there's a couple of different steps you got to go through to go, to do that. The, the gate attendants themselves, I mean, they, they are very, very good with technology, first of all, but they were being very helpful. Most of the time, they would grab the, the person's phone and start doing it themselves and just getting them to that point where they create that, the, they have to create an account before they can do anything, and then going through that, the, the process with it. So they, but they've been great as well. But, you know, like I said, we, we were there, it wasn't, I don't think it was non-stop. You know, maybe the, the first warm day, we started going through the, the Memorial Day holiday, that, I, I don't know if there was, there seemed to be quite a few just hit or miss issues with the technology through that.
At the JRD meeting last week, we had some feedback from the swimming commissioner of grandparents who were picking up kids from the evening practice, who were asked to pay a dollar admission, and went back and looked at the ordinance and the old ordinance. The old ordinance, we would let a non-swimmer, that was over 59, in for free, but the current ordinance won't let it. Is that something that we would need to change to, like, let grandma pick up her kids essentially? Or is that something that you can wave through rules, or do we need to do it statutorily?
Well, I, I don't think it's a pick, an issue of, of they were just picking them up, they were dropping, they, they took them there and they were at the pool. So they, they were through practice is the, the understanding that I have with it. And which, I mean, we're, the non-swimmers, we charge a dollar because they're taking a chair, they're taking up space in the pool, and, and, you know, that, that has, does have an impact on the operation, just, just in someone sitting there. So that's why we, we did that. Any change that we would have with that, you know, if it's just picking up, there's a lot of times when, you know, "Hey, yeah, go get your kid," and they come right back out, and it's not a problem. But that's my understanding, it was not a, just a draw, a pickup type of thing.
Thanks for clarifying.
And it could have been an isolated, I'm not saying every single one was, was a, they just stayed there, but.
Oh, no, you guys do a great job. It's, running the pool's tough, and, but it's a valuable service to the community, the kids love it. I mean, I was coming back home today, running an errand, picking something up at the house, and there's two kids riding their bikes, neighbor's kids are riding their bikes home from swim practice at 9:00 this morning.
Yeah.
Felt really bad for them because it was still kind of chilly out.
It was a little chilly.
Anything else?
All right, following up also on old and new business, I'd like to bring up the fence issue on Trine in Columbus Street. Just to bring up some clarity and try to bring closure to this, Mr. Demkowitz received a letter from the city that I understand you have some questions, and if you want to just maybe read the letter and then see if we can bring closure to this or what?
Thank you, happy birthday, by the way. Yeah, I, we sent a letter to Mr. Moore today regarding the fence, and in, in addressing your concern about the safety, we asked that we could go back to the original design, which was the finials with a rail across the top. Landmarks recommended the open top, which we weren't really, you know, we didn't really want to, but that's what they recommended, and they recommend, or, and they approved a 42-inch height. It was our assumption when we went through and the council did the three readings of the ordinance at the last meeting, that that covered the replacement of the fence at 42 inches, and we were going to go back to Landmarks to request the rail across the top, to go back to the original design. Now we don't know where we are because he said that originally, when we talked about it, and we went from the approval of Landmarks to P&amp;Z, P&amp;Z would, he said P&amp;Z would not act on it because it's, it's in the right-of-way, that council would have to act on it. My assumption was, and our assumption was, when we presented it to council, you were going to act on it, that was it, because P&amp;Z didn't, couldn't do anything with it. So now he's saying that it has to go back, and I mean, it's like a dog chasing his tail.
Yeah, so the ordinance, I pulled it up, and the ordinance that we discussed last meeting was just on the encroachment of the right-of-way. There was not anything in there about fence height or anything of that nature. My, my question would be to, I'm guessing, Mr. Hare, you know, what do we, what does this body need to do to, if anything, to fix this or correct it? Because, well, I think we all left here thinking the same thing, that this was kind of a done deal.
I'm not familiar enough with exactly what's been signed or done, maybe Thad is, is more involved in that, but our typical requirement is there is a fence in a front yard cannot exceed 36 inches.
It's a side yard.
Mr. Demkowitz, are they asking you to go to planning and zoning or the historical board?
I don't know where we're going anymore.
The letter, though, did it ask you to go to planning and zoning, or did it ask you to go to Landmarks?
I believe Landmarks has approved the application. It would be the front yard because it's a corner lot, so both streets are considered frontage, so anything in the front yard is, is 36 inches, is typical for any planning and zoning requirements. So if there was a variance from that, it would need to be granted by planning and zoning to allow the 42-inch height.
This is a rear yard, not the front, it doesn't.
But he's saying if it's on the street, it's considered frontage. So the Landmarks would, I've seen what they've been asking people to put in, it's that black iron fence with the pickets above it, which scares the crap out of me if you own an animal that has to jump a 36, three feet, is what you're saying, it's?
That's what's allowed in a front yard by, by code.
So if Landmarks approves it at 42 with the pickets?
Subject to planning and zoning's approval of the variance.
So they still have to go to planning and zoning?
Can we just do it for him?
Mr. Box, what were you going to say?
I was just going to say that Landmarks approves the, the appearance of it, the aesthetic of it to fit in with the historic town center. P&amp;Z Planning and Zoning Commission has the authority to grant or not grant variances of the height, so it's a separate process. What was your question, Mr. Shea?
Well, so eventually, P&amp;Z kicks up to us, can we just short-circuit the bureaucratic process for him and help this man along?
I mean, you, you could, well, the variance process is an administrative process rather than a legislative one.
Okay.
So this is, this body is an appellate body from Planning and Zoning Commission for that type of administrative process, and so short-circuiting it might create similar requests out of administrative processes in the future.
Understood. I just feel bad.
Do you have the power to do that? Yes. Do I think it's advisable?
Personally feel bad for Mr. Demkowitz, who's been sloped down by the wheels of government trying to replace an old fence. And I can understand and hear his frustration, this man has made me. This man has made more trips to this building than most people will make in their life. So I'm just trying to find a way to do it. So right now, the only way to solve his problem is that he's got to go to P and Z and get the variance without us violating the administrative processes?
I mean, that would be the normal course, is to go to Planning and Zoning to get the variance. Because what came before this body, as Mr. Milken said, was just permission for that encroachment because it's city property. And so that's why Planning and Zoning wouldn't act on it before, was because it was city property and there was no, um, permission to put, put the fence on it. Now that that permission is resolved, Planning and Zoning Commission has the ability to act.
Mr. Hare, what's the possibility of him being on the Planning and Zoning for tomorrow? Or was the agenda already set?
We need to advertise and so we'll need to advertise a variance request. Uh, the application deadline for the July meeting is today.
And how much is that application fee?
Uh, I believe it's $200.
And I'm paying 500 for the right of way fee? Come on, guys, this is really getting way out of hand. I mean, this is not a, it's not a warehouse, it's a fence. It's not even as tall as that desk. I, you know, I don't know what else we can do. We jumped through every hoop we could to try to get this resolved. First I'm told that P and Z won't do anything because it's in the right of way. Now it's approved, now it has to go back to P and Z, then it has to go back to Landmarks. Where the hell does this all stop? Pardon me. Where does this all stop? I mean, you know, I, I, I still, I can still tell you that I can go over to my house, call a fencer tomorrow and tell him to come out and rip down the wooden fence and replace it with a wooden fence and I don't have to have a permit, I don't have to go to P and Z. I'm trying to do the right things here and we've done it. This has been a year for a lousy 42-inch fence. I can take you around town and show you fences that are up that shouldn't be up, sitting on sidewalks, in right of ways. What, what else can I do? What else can we do? What do we need to do to get this approved and finalize it so we can get it done?
Well, I'd like to see us just go ahead and do it because I'd like to see your frustration solved. I mean, one of the reasons I did this was to help solve problems for the public and this is a problem that's been going on for you. Um, that's my personal thought on it is.
Yeah, I mean, I could call the guy and I could tell him to put the thing up. What are you gonna do? Are, are you gonna arrest me? Are you gonna tear it down? Be my guest? I, you know, what else do we have to do? It's not that big a deal, folks, it's a fence.
If we can, I'm, I'm willing to put it out there as a piece of legislation for the next meeting.
That seems to be the most expeditious solution from what I'm hearing. Um, now, again, that, that would require, you know, a vote and, uh, and, yeah, I mean, it would require all of that. Um, you know, based on what I've heard, at, at this point, we're kind of outside of, I don't know if we can waive fees or anything from this body, but I think my point is just that, I think at this juncture for this body, I think we've done all we can do outside of what you're suggesting, Mr. Shea. And I'm, I'm sorry if that's not the best answer, but if, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I'm hearing.
I agree that, I believe that it, it needs to go back to P and Z if that's where it, to do it properly, um, for, for now and for the future. So as Mr. Boggs was stating, is that correct to, to P and Z? So I have to wait another 30 days before he goes back to P and Z? Then I have to wait another 30 days before it comes back to council? Hell, we're in August and September. I'll never get a fencer. I'll be like, if I get to think what happened in 2023.
I agree with you.
I, you know, like I say, I don't, I don't care about the fee. You know, that doesn't bother me. I'll pay the fee, $500, I understand. But if, if I were building a factory, then yeah, I'd jump through the mortgage, but I'm not. It's a fence, for God's sake. I mean, I don't know how else to say it. It's a 42-inch metal fence with a rail on top so nobody could get hurt, Mrs. Davis. And, you know, it's all for the, the enhancement of our property value and making the neighborhood look better. I mean, I can let the fence that's there now rot and let it fall down. If you want to pick it up, you pick it up.
Let me, let me ask, Lucas, if he, if he did a 36-inch and didn't need the variance, would he have to go back to P and Z for?
No, not within, within the code.
Why don't you just go to a 36? Why? Why is that so different?
Because of the aesthetics of it. 36-inch fence looks like.
What's your fence? What's your fence now?
Yeah, oh gee, there's a fence there, oh, you must have made a mistake because it's about that tall.
Then, then that's your choice then. I mean, I think that's your, you know, that's. That would be the resolution at this point.
The whole resolution would be just to tear the damn thing down and let it go. But that's not what we want to do. We want the property to look good.
Mr. Clark asked you about your, the height of your current fence, is it, it's 42?
It's 42 inches.
Okay. All right, well, I don't think we're.
Did you have to go to Planning and Zoning to get the 42 inches approved previously?
No, he said, uh, they wouldn't do it because it was in the right of way. So it had to be referred to council.
So it's never gotten approval from P and Z of the, the, the size? He's never gotten the variance yet because he never got that far because they said.
No, no, we got that far, but we returned then. He said, you can't, it has to go to council for the approval of the, uh, fence being in the right of way.
Right. Which, which we did, now it goes back to P and Z for your variance. I mean, that's the process.
I'm asking, on the original fence, the 42 original fence?
Oh, please look, don't kick, don't kick.
Don't go there, okay.
Don't kick that dog. That, that's a, that's a whole, that's another hour discussion.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Well, no, wait a minute. What's, what's the answer? What are we doing?
You go to back to P and Z or you build a 36-inch fence? Am I missing something?
I think that's, the only one would be Mr. Shea's suggestion.
Or if, I think Mr. Shea wants to bring legislation up next week, that's his.
Unfortunately, I, I think those are the only two avenues at this point.
I'm gonna put legislation on the next meeting for it.
And you realize that you're setting precedents, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Sure. You guys can vote, you can vote it down, but I personally think that this is part of our job is to help solve residents' problems and taking a year to get a fence approved is one of the most ridiculous things I've ever heard of in my life.
Well, but it, the fence is in public right of way. I mean, there's some extraneous circumstances here that, that, you know, that create a little bit of this with, with him putting the fence there in the first place and, uh.
But let's be clear, the fence is approved for the current location at the current height. It's not approved, but in the correct location where the property line is, at the height that the Planning and Zoning and Landmarks has approved, that is approved.
I believe that expired, the fence that's there now expired years ago.
Yeah, but they, if it were on the property line.
But it's not.
No, I'm just saying, if he went to Landmarks today and put it on the property line at the recommended height, it is, it would be approved.
I assume, I mean, I'm not Landmark.
The, the location question is resolved.
Right.
It can stay, a fence can stay where this fence is. If it were 36 inches, it could be installed because it's been improved by Landmarks. It's, it's all about that height variance. So if Mr. Shea wants to propose legislation to address that at our next meeting, you know, we can work on that. That's one avenue. The other avenue is to go the variance course to get that extra height. I think that's.
I would like to have one thing, please understood, this is a side yard and a backyard, it's not a front.
All yards that face right of way are frontage streets, even if there's not a front door. They're all treated as, as front yards.
Yeah, and Rose by any other name, I, I, I understand that, but it's not a, it's not a front yard. The connotation of front yard means it's on the corner of Columbus and Trine, in my opinion, and it's not. It's all in the back.
But this.
We're just splitting hairs now.
I mean, the, from a zoning perspective, it's already been determined that it is in a front yard, even if functionally and other senses, it doesn't look like a front yard. It is a front yard because it's on the street. So yeah, we'll just move forward, either, you either apply for the variance or probably see how Mr. Shea's legislation goes in two weeks.
Is there a, if he gets an application in today, can he still make the next of P and Z agenda meeting? I would go ahead and put that application in just in case because it doesn't sound like some of my fellow councilmen are as easy to buck tradition as I am.
When's the next P and Z meeting? Tomorrow?
July 11.
Pardon?
July 11.
Great, I'm not, we're not in town. We're out of town that week for two weeks.
Can they hear it without him there?
They could.
Could he send a representative?
Yes.
I'm just trying to cover your bases. I mean, I'm getting the vibe from some of my council members that they're not really thrilled with my suggestion.
I, I'm getting vibes that I don't know why we're picking fly doo-doo out of pepper to get a fence, a damn fence. I, I just can't quite get it, folks, I just don't get it. If I was, if I was putting up a two-old outhouse, I'd get less hassle than a fence. I, I'm just very disappointed in the council, I'm very, not, not everybody, but I'm just very disappointed in this process. I served on this council for 10 years and we never, ever, and I think I served sometime when Matt was there too, we never ran into these kind of problems. We use common sense. Common sense says the fence isn't going to hurt anybody, it's just there.
I don't, I don't disagree with that statement at all. Um, it's just, we, we've sat here now for, I think, 10 minutes and circulated what our options are at this point. And unfortunately, we've, we've listed, we've gone through all of our options. I mean, I, I'd love nothing more than to tell you, yeah, go ahead.
Then that's all you have to do?
I, I don't think legally we can.
I mean, here's, here's the issue. We understand it's a fence and it doesn't seem like a big deal on the surface and it probably isn't a big deal in your instance. But next time, when it is something, you know, there are procedures in place that talk about Landmark Commission approval and variance approval and here we had the extra variable of actually having the approval, the, the permission from the city to locate it on the city's land. So it is more complicated than just a fence and what these seven have to worry about is not your fence, which isn't hurting anybody, it's the next person who comes along and says, oh, you made an exception for Mr. Demkowitz, we need to make an exception to the process for me. So I don't think that this whole argument about, oh, it's just a fence, carries water. I'm sorry, sir, but I'm.
No, 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 I understand.
We've sat here for 20 minutes.
No, I, I understand, but what I'm saying is this, I, our assumption was when Mr. Moore told us to take it to council, that everything went to council, the height, the right of way, everything. And he said council has to approve it. We worked under the assumption that council approved it the last, at the last meeting.
The, I, I think then maybe we should have those concerned, or have you address those communication concerns with Mr. Moore then? If, if you feel missed, I, I, I can't.
Yeah, I know, that's all I can tell you anywhere. He's not, he doesn't have the authority to act on it. That's what he told me. So we'll just.
Yeah, it's, those are our options unfortunately right now.
How long are you guys gonna be here tonight? My wife will be over labor, I'm sure.
All right. Um, anything? Any other old or new business?
I just have one. I asked for Lucas, there's been a lot of development over off of Winchester Pike and Bixby outside of what we've been talking about. So I asked Mr. Hare to just briefly touch, um, I asked him to bring him out and just briefly touch on some of the things that are in progress or that have been approved that we kind of just need to be aware of.
On what, when it, where the Bixby?
Winchester Pike and Bixby Road. Cause we're coming up with that, is that Columbus? There's a whole bunch of properties, so I just asked him to do.
One of his overviews?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is outside of the city of Canal Winchester, on the fringes of Canal Winchester, correct?
Because there's so many pieces that are starting to develop out and just to get a better understanding of it all.
Yeah.
Mr. Hare?
So on the, on the screen in front of you is the, this is a map showing the, the start parcel is the Levin property that's the subject of the rezoning that you're going to hear this evening, that you're gonna consider this evening. The two parcels to the south in the purple color are zoned limited manufacturing. Those are Canal Crossing, which is the industrial park that has been either constructed or approved by City Council for zoning and will be on the next Planning and Zoning Commission agenda for, for final development plan approval. And so you can just stick on that slide, I'm gonna just talk everything on that first slide. Other projects in the area, Mr. McGill referenced a property across the street that's also owned by Mrs. Levin. Um, it's 70-plus acres, uh, the triangular parcel there that has frontage on both Bryce Road and Winchester Pike. Uh, it's my understanding that property is in contract to be sold to a residential developer. Uh, that property is currently in Madison Township and, uh, I have not seen an annexation request come before the Franklin County Commissioners for that, so I'm not sure of the status of that property. Uh, but I do know that it is, it is in contract to be sold. Um, the property directly to the west of the Levin property, the start parcel, is in the city of Columbus. It is zoned, um, a number of ways. It's got three different zonings on the property. The pro, the, the portion along Bixby Road is zoned, um, limited commercial for. And, uh, that limited commercial for zoning allows for a number of commercial related uses, hotels, what you would typically see in like a neighborhood commercial center. Uh, to the north of that is more a mixed use. It allows a significant portion of the land to be multifamily and then also neighborhood, some neighborhood commercial uses. And then as you get over towards Ebright Road, um, which is just off the screen, uh, here to the west, uh, that is all multifamily. And so the traffic study that Mr. McGill showed you for 5100 Ebright Road was a traffic study for this development. And so that development was recently, um, approved by the Development Commission, uh, recommended for approval to City Council and it's going through that process currently. And so I believe there's a little over 300 units that are proposed on the east side of Ebright Road. And then there's just under 200 units that were recommended for approval on the west side of Ebright Road. So about 500 multifamily units, um, that would be located at 33 and Ebright Road. And going back to, to Gender, um, you'll just stay on that slide. Going back to Gender Road, um, the parcel at Winchester Pike and Gender Road, uh, that has had, um, a rezoning approved for 142 multifamily units and that is just directly to the east of North Point's project there, so on the west side of George Creek. Um, so that has been approved for 142 units. And then there's an industrial project that is, uh, Becknell Industrials proposing there. Uh, that was, there was a recommendation by the Columbus Development Commission to approve that industrial zoning on that parcel. Uh, that took place in May and that's pending approval by Columbus City Council. There are also eight out parcels associated with that development, the first of which has been proposed for a Turkey Hill gas station. That has been approved by, um, the Columbus Development Commission. That complied with zonings, there wasn't a rezoning, uh, involved there. And that's directly at the intersection of Winchester Pike and Gender Road. And then there are seven other out parcels associated with that that have yet to have any development proposed on them.
I've got just a quick, right, is this all already annexed into Columbus, both this and this or?
Yes.
Both of all that?
Yeah, that's all part of the Cobbleton Development Tax.
Okay, okay.
So that's what I mentioned to you, the, the west side of that has just been proposed for development. The Development Commission's recommended approval of that multifamily project there. Uh, I believe there are some single family associated with that, that there's 80, 84 single family units and 300-plus multifamily units on that portion. And then there are other portions of that site that are closer to the Levin property that are zoned neighborhood commercial, that are zoned limited commercial for and that are zoned, uh, H35, which is their multifamily district.
So right now, we're looking at, my math is horrible tonight, 500 to 600 multifamily housing that's already been approved or is darned close to getting approval?
That's, yes, between what's been approved, what's recommended for approval on Ebright Road and what's been approved on Winchester Pike? Road and what's been approved on Winchester Pike?
And because of their location, you do not believe that they have been asked to contribute to the Gender Road project for updating it because it's outside of the radius?
Correct, none of those have been asked to contribute.
Even though they're going to drastically affect it?
Outside, out of mind.
Not to me. The, are we still on, on, trying to get Ebright Road closed down and turned into that turnaround?
Ebright Road is in the city of Columbus and has an overpass.
Oh, not Ebright?
Rager.
Yes, Rager Road, the commitment is that, that North Point is proposing that they cul-de-sac that, so that requires ODOT's approval to do so, but as they move forward with their final development plan, they'll be proceeding with their construction documents, and then that'll be submitted to ODOT to start the public process, to, to seek public input on the closure.
Since the multifamily housings are falling closer to that thirty-three overpass potential, are they contributing to any of that? Can we find that out?
Yeah, I can look into it, I haven't, I haven't followed those closely on Ebright Road, but they, they're both were at the June ninth meeting, the city of Columbus, those were before the Development Commission.
Well, I know the mayor of Columbus-
They're giving fifteen-year, hundred percent tax abatements for a lot of those apartments.
Yeah, the mayor of Columbus has asked for lots of housing to be put in, the one on Gender Road that you said was passed by planning and zoning, so it's going to be multifamily and an industrial building, do you know the size of the industrial building?
It's more than five hundred thousand, I don't know the specific.
Please ask the market piece, I saw, I don't know what that means.
Lucas, any of this, that's being developed by Columbus of housing and apartments, is any of it staying in the city of Canal Winchester school system?
No.
No, okay. Always a great.
And, and did you see anything come out from the mayor of Columbus regarding the, and I, I heard this, but I have not seen it actually, that they are asking for multifamily housing to go from World Harvest all the way down to where the old Scarborough used to be? Has anybody seen anything on that? Because I have not been able to find it in writing yet.
I have not specifically seen any plans, there was another plan that was approved on Gender Road recently, for a smaller complex, that's right in that World Harvest area, but it was on the, the east side of the roadway, but I want to say it was a hundred and twenty units or so, it wasn't a large project.
You, you might be thinking of the CRA that goes all the way from Hamilton Road down to Gender Road and all the way across, that creates a CRA that gives a hundred per, it's a fifteen-year, hundred percent tax abatement for multifamily housing, if it rents, I think it's, is it twenty percent, Lucas, of the-
Affordable housing.
Of apartments are listed as affordable housing, it's twenty or thirty, I can't, something like that, but-
It's forty.
Forty percent?
Yeah, twenty percent are subsidized at sixty percent market, twenty percent are subsidized at eighty percent market, and the remaining are at market.
Six-year conventional.
So, for, okay.
That'll get you the hundred percent abatements on multifamily in Columbus.
Okay. And that goes all the way up to refugee, so it takes all, I presume it's all that area.
Yeah, I've heard that it went, it went towards the old Scarborough area.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there, there are three thousand units that are approved and yet to be constructed, not counting the ones we discussed this evening, within a, within a mile and a half of Gender Road.
So up to thirty-six fifty.
Yes.
These warehouses look better every day.
Columbus is pushing affordable housing really hard, they are, they don't care where they put it.
Well, and there is a need for affordable housing, I mean, let's not be wrong, there is a need for it. It's just a lot, that's a lot of traffic in a concentrated area.
I mean, the improvements of the infrastructure needs to come along with that, that's where I think that Columbus fails quite a bit, I mean, that's where they failed, they failed year after year on Gender Road, what they've done up there is a mess, I mean, and it's, it's just going to continue on down because they do not put infrastructure, they don't bring the police down here, they, they have one fire station for-
Well, and it's disappointing that they're not-
It is, that they're not contributing.
Financing some of the changes, they're not asking these developers to contribute.
Right, it is sad, it's been sad for years and years and years, and they've never been held accountable.
So how can we influence that in any way, shape, or form, being a neighboring community? And I realize that Columbus is a behemoth compared to us, but how can we influence them to contribute a fair share to the improvements in that area? We as council need to, to think through that.
There is a safety study that's currently underway in the city of Columbus that is considering Gender Road from essentially Winchester Pike up to I-70, and so, both Bryce and Gender, it turns into Bryce Road when you get towards seventy, but both Mr. Peoples and I have been on a few calls with the city of Columbus to talk about that study, and specifically about the Winchester Pike intersection, but they're considering safety improvements in the entire corridor, and then once they define what the deficiencies are, then they'll start strategizing on funding strategies to make those improvements.
Is there an estimated timeline on that?
I don't know that they gave us the specific timeline, they hired a consultant, MS Consultants is their, is the consulting engineer that's doing that study for them.
That's the worst time over the last thirty years we've heard that, though, either.
All right, anything further? Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Lucas.
So moved by Mr. Shea?
I'll second it.
Second, Mrs. Amick, roll call please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Council will resume at seven forty-five.[1017.51]
Is it us?
You mean they're still working on the...
I think it's us rolling on the floor.
Twenty-two, Canal Winchester City Council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance will be led by Mr. Shea.
The pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God and indivisible, the living, the dead, and all its servants.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Amick?
Present.
Mrs. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Milliken?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. Ward?
Here.
Time in seven forty-six. First item, minutes twenty-two dash zero two four, June sixth. Work session minutes. Discussion? Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Amick and second by Mr. Walker. Roll call.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Miss twenty-two dash zero two five, June sixth, City Council minutes. Discussion? Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Walker, second by Mrs. Amos. Roll call.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
And we have communication twenty-two dash zero zero eight from the Madison Township Police Statistics for May. That's in your packet. We'll move on to public comments. Public comments are limited to five minutes per individual. If you wish to address council, please approach the podium, print your name and address, and begin speaking by stating your name. Your time will not begin until you begin speaking. When you have one minute remaining, you will be gently interrupted to signal that your time is about to expire. After five minutes, you will be notified that your time has expired, and the podium should be vacated to allow the next person to speak. Let it be noted, this is not a time for council to answer specific questions. If you do have a question, you may ask it during your time, and we will attempt to have your question addressed throughout the remainder of this meeting. If you do not feel your question has been addressed, please reach out to a member of council or appropriate city director after the meeting. At this time, I would like whoever to speak.
Good evening. Jackie Marion, two sixty-two, Woodsview Drive, Canal Winchester. I'm not here. I'm sure you'll be disappointed to talk about warehouses or swimming pools. I'm here to talk about something I think we can all agree on. I had the opportunity, week before last, with Mrs. Amos and Mr. Shea and Mr. Peebles to walk downtown and look at the streets and the curbs in the downtown area of Canal Winchester. And I think we all agree that we love this town, and we find it charming, and we want it to keep it that way. And as we walked and talked, we found a lot of opportunities to make it more charming, more safe. We still have an issue with crosswalks downtown. I think I came to you last year and talked about the situation we have between Corner Smith and Sticks and Stones. Saturday, I watched three different groups of people walk three different ways across the crosswalk. And Matt very calmly told me that the signs are where people should walk, but they don't. It is an issue there, and something that we need to address eventually. Some of the things that need to be done downtown are long-term projects. They take money, and of course, that's always a priority. But I'm asking you to look into the wallets of Canal Winchester and hopefully come up with some wallets, or some money, not wallets. We also have an issue of curbs being cleaned downtown because everybody's parking there. I know other cities figure out a way to maybe clean the streets early in the morning. That would be a great asset. I forgot to tell you, I'm representing the Downtown Business Association. I should have said that upfront. And Carmen, who has a wonderful vision of everything, is going to talk in a minute here. I also want to talk about beautification. We have all the elements in this town to make downtown dramatic, but we kind of spread them all around. The wonderful flower pots that we have hanging all, on all different directions. If they were concentrated downtown, it'd really make an impact. I was walking down to the depot Saturday, and I noticed we have three tree planters in front of one business down there. I think it's the lawyer's office. If we made an effort to gather those things into the four-block area of Columbus and Waterloo, we can make an impact with what we have. It wouldn't cost more money, and it would be easier for the guys to find where to water things. I see them traveling all over looking for the pots. So we have opportunities to make downtown charming. And I just encourage you to look at those things when you go out of here in daylight. Look at the curbs. They need help. Look at the bricks. I have a much better understanding of the brick repair. Matt was kind enough to send Shannon to repair the uneven area in front of Corner Smith last week, and I think he was there for six hours to do three spots. And if were we to do that all over town, it would be endless work. It could never be done. So there's opportunities to make downtown really glow, and I'm encouraging you to think about that. If we edged and mulched the trees downtown, what a nice entryway into the downtown on the main streets. That's it. I'll let Carmen talk about her vision.
Hi, everyone. I'm Carmen Smith, one South High Street at Corner Smith. Excuse me. Really, I'm just here, first of all, I want to thank everyone. Thank everyone. I love being a part of the community. And gosh, I listen to all the stuff that's happening on the periphery. And I just kind of want to suck it all in for a minute and talk about the historic downtown Canal Winchester, and maybe just kind of share something, maybe some possibilities for the future. Anyway, what kind of started all of this is that I was reading an article about the fourteen most charming small cities and small towns in Ohio. And so I went through them, and they ranged in size from about a population of fourteen thousand to one fewer than a thousand, and kind of was going through the line items of what made them so charming. And actually, I recognized a lot of the things that we already do in those. Having said that, I also saw that there were some possibilities for some new and unique additions to what we do to kind of qualify as a charming little town. And so what I'm really coming here to talk about is just a consideration or an ear for a beautification commission or a committee. And I'm just going to say that one of the small towns was German Village. And so we know that it's probably forty-five hundred people in that area, and it has a periphery. That's, it's maybe a little more different than what we think of the beautiful area of the village there. And so I think, and one of them was Marietta, which is fourteen thousand people. But of course, it is also budded by Appalachia. So there are things that are in the periphery that kind of, that's there, but they kind of draw everything into the old downtown or the old areas where there's charming shops, and where everything is kind of focused around the history and the culture, and the aesthetics of those areas that make people want to gather there, want to come and visit there, that they know that they've been there and they've had a wow moment. And so that's just basically what I want to do is kind of put a bug in your ear about, at least the conversation, open the conversation about what it would mean if we kind of add to our dynamics a beautification of our old town. And you probably all know that German Village has a pretty rigid beautification, you know, commission, very rigid. It's kind of our landmarks and beyond. But for some reason, it must be worth it, because year after year after year, you know, they keep making these lists, whether it be in Ohio Magazine, or Country Living, or the like. So anyway, my goal was just to just get us into a mindset of maybe figuring out a way to, with everything else going around us, growing, changing, that we actually kind of step inward and look at beautifying our village. That's it. Thank you.
I'm really nervous. Hi, my name is Donna Perry, and I live at sixty-four twenty-nine Fox Hill Drive. I moved here in August of 2020, and I feel so blessed to live here. I love Canal Winchester. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm here to ask City Council to please enforce the law that the use of fireworks within the city limits is not permitted. Per City Code one five one nine point oh four, possession, sale, or discharge is prohibited. I live in the villages of Westchester, and last year, my first year in my home, my first Fourth of July in my new home, the people who live behind my home set off a massive firework display. They live at the end of a cul-de-sac and are surrounded by homes on all sides. They aimed the fireworks at my neighbor's house and mine intentionally when they knew that we called the sheriff. I found out this is an annual block party they throw without a permit, and they illegally shut down the streets. With barrels they stole from the city. I spoke with Matt Peebles, the Public Works Director for the city, on July seventh, 2021, about this issue. And I sent him an email with photos of the fireworks, the debris, and the stolen barrels. We had to leave our home and stay somewhere else that night because of all the noise, smoke, and concerns over a potential fire while we were sleeping in our home. The next day, there was shrapnel over my roof, my property and my neighborhood, and my neighbor's yard was also purposely damaged with some kind of chemical during the night because he confronted them directly. I can only imagine what they will do this year when they think it's now legal. I would ask that the city put out a notice on the local news, similar to the city of Columbus, Upper Arlington, and Dublin, to remind all the residents that setting off fireworks in town is illegal. I'm here to ask the city to enforce this law to protect my property and my neighbor's property. One person should not be allowed to terrorize a whole street and surrounding areas, right in town in the villages of Westchester, just a mile away from here. I would ask that the sheriff step up patrols in the town and the villages of Westchester to have a presence in the neighborhood. The next issue that must be addressed now is the excessive speeding on Gender Road, Fox Hill Drive where I live, and Elementary Way. I spoke with Matt Peebles about this serious issue last year and requested additional speed limit signage. I also spoke to Sheriff Kelly Walker when she first took office to request more patrols. So far, nothing has changed, no new signs, no speed limit painted on the street, and no regular speed patrol. When people are coming into town from six seventy-four towards town, the speed limit goes from fifty to forty-five for a second, and then to thirty-five, which doesn't make sense. People are not slowing down, and they're flying into town fifty-five miles an hour plus on Gender Road past my street. There are two elementary schools and a rehabilitation center at this intersection. This is a residential area, and the speeding must be stopped. Please install new signage with flashing lights, like most other areas we currently have when you're entering our town. Please also paint the speed limit on the road in big numbers so it's obvious that people need to slow down. Most importantly, please ask the sheriff to start pulling people over for speeding on Gender and Fox Hill Drive. I see a sheriff driving through the neighborhood occasionally, but rarely ticketing speeders at this intersection. People also drag race and speed at this intersection on Gender Road when leaving town, when it changes from two lanes to one lane right by the school. The speeding in this area of Canal Winchester has been neglected, and I'm putting the city on notice that something has to be done now, because it's just a matter of time before there's a serious accident at this intersection. Please put up flashing signs, paint the speed limit on the street, and patrol the area on a regular basis for excessive speeding. This is my last comment. The fact that the City Council thought it was appropriate to remove the warehouse referendum from the ballot and arbitrarily make the decision on behalf of the voters to allow more warehouses in Canal Winchester is abhorrent, and you should all be ashamed of that error in judgment. Unlike the vote that was stolen from us, I know that my neighbors and I will get that chance to vote for or against each and every one of you. Thank you.
Ma'am, did you sign the sheet? Thank you.
But I would ask that you guys do, please do something about the fireworks, because when it does become legal, it's going to get really bad in Canal.
Good evening. I'm Jim Bone Line, sixty-three twenty, Rossmore Lane. Wow, this is nice. You deserve it. The city of Canal Winchester deserves it, and this is truly a wonderful place. The acoustics are terrific. The seats are nice, too. I just wanted to make you aware, and I guess you haven't been told yet. Every year, the sheriff has a recognition ceremony for the annual, for the people that are retiring and have retired during the year. And he also does a recognition ceremony. And Kelly was mentioned this year, Sergeant Kelly. And she's terrific. I just wanted to bring up this one thing. She received the life-saving award. And I'll just read this. It's only a short paragraph. Sergeant Austin Shore, can't see this. Sergeant Austin Shore and Sergeant Kelly Walker were dispatched to an unconscious male. When the deputies arrived, the victim did not have a pulse, and his skin tone was blue. Sergeant Shore began performing CPR while Sergeant Walker ran to her cruiser and retrieved Narcan and administered two doses. Both sergeants took turns performing CPR, and roughly a minute later, Sergeant Walker felt a pulse. Medics arrived and transported the victim to the hospital. So I just wanted to make you aware that that's our sergeant. And I don't think she knew I was going to do that. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I think we've got a great police force. They care tremendously about this city, and they have great people. One more thing, also, we had a deputy, Trina Kohler, she retired this year, and we truly miss her. And I think everybody knows Trina. So thank you so much. I appreciate it, and wonderful job. This is great.
There is no one else to speak this evening. We will move on to reports of city officials and staff, and we'll begin with Mayor Ebert.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. I really have nothing additional to add to my written report, but if you have any questions about any of it, I'd be glad to answer.
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Fairford County Sheriff, Sergeant Walker.
Thank you. To go along with my written report, just, I think we, you guys spoke about it in council, your session. We are extra three-fiving the poll, making sure that, you know, our presence is known, trying to keep the riffraff out of there. And then just to address, you know, what you said about Gender Road and Fox Hill. I will tell you that my deputies are out there. They are watching for speeders. I can tell you that we had a complaint about, in front of the golf course, people were saying that they were speeding up and down through Gender. So my deputies happen out there. They are watching for it. We can't be out there all of the day, unfortunately. Dealing with calls for service, all other things that we have to do, we just can't be able to work on time. But I will make sure that they know to step up patrols in that area, okay? But if anyone has any questions, I'm more than welcome to answer them for you.
Yeah, I have one, Sergeant Walker. With regards to fireworks and, you know, Fourth of July coming up, what does a typical Fourth of July holiday weekend look like for you guys, as far as, on top of your normal duties and enforcing...
I should give him that look. So, just a typical Fourth of July weekend, our call screen is completely full with fireworks complaints. So it's prioritized, priority one, priority two, priority three, priority four, for calls for service. Half the time, we can't get to your fireworks complaints because we're on priority one calls. So the fireworks complaint calls will pen, and by the time that we get out there to those, they're done letting them off. So if we do get out there, we can't stop them mid-let-off. So they're going to let them off. You know, if they already lit that fuse to that big box of fireworks, we can't stop it. They're going to go off, we're going to say, hey, no more letting off fireworks.
Is there any, I understand you're not going to be able to get to everything, but is there any sort of maybe a follow-up of kind of the lower priorities to check in on those complaints and, you know, just...
Yeah, definitely. That's something that we are going to check up on. But like, you know, by the time that we get out there, they may have cleaned up their whole entire mess. We may not have any proof that they were setting them off when they did set them off. And that's something that we need to charge them with, that ordinance of setting off fireworks within the city of Canal Winchester.
Gotcha.
Is proof that they were doing it. Now, if we roll up and they're setting them off in the cul-de-sac, they're going to get a summons to court. You know, we're going to summons them to court and say, hey, now you have to appear for setting off these fireworks.
Thank you.
But trying to reach every firework complaint in the city of Canal Winchester on the Fourth of July weekend is...
I understand. Yeah. Thank you.
Real quick, and Mr. Bob, you may be able to help us, but it has to do with the fireworks with the change in the House Bill one seventy-two. What do we need to do as a city? Because I don't think our ordinance is strong enough now that the state just reduced their legislation on it.
So, thank you for that. I was going to address that in my report, given the public comments today. So I can either address it now, or I think I'm on the agenda.
Please go ahead.
Sergeant Walker, do you have anything?
Go for it.
So, the House Bill that's going into effect on July first designates certain days when under state law it is now legal to discharge consumer-grade fireworks, one point four G classification of fireworks. The city's existing ordinance says no person may discharge fireworks unless they have an exhibition permit. That remains good law. So there is nothing that the city has to do legally to re, to make it illegal to discharge fireworks in the city, because that's your existing law. The municipalities under the new law have the ability to ban discharge of fireworks, and so that... and so that existing ordinance here will remain in effect. It is, I want to make it very clear to everybody, it is illegal to discharge fireworks in the city of Canal Winchester.
Can I have the television? It's on television for others.
Ma'am, this isn't a time for public comments, sorry.
So the other cities that are changing, is it just because their ordinances were not strong enough, their laws were not strong enough? Because there's a lot of cities that are revamping their fireworks.
There are a lot of cities that are doing legislation of one kind or another. I haven't looked at all of those. I know that some may reference state law, and so because the underlying state law is changing and their ordinance just references it, then they have to change to have a ban. I do know that in other cities that my group represents, where they have an existing no-discharge, no-reference-to-state-code that would create a caveat to that, we have advised them that they have no, that there's no need to put in place a new ordinance.
So if I understand you correctly, because our ordinance does not refer to follow the current state law, ours just says no fireworks, it is a chargeable offense?
It is a chargeable offense to discharge fireworks. Elsewhere in our ordinance, it refers to state law for possession of fireworks, but not to discharge. It is a chargeable offense to discharge fireworks, both today and after July 1st.
So since we don't have anywhere that sells fireworks, other than your basic smoke bombs, pop, things like that, that ordinance does not need to be modified?
Correct.
Sergeant Kelly, have fun.
Well, Sergeant Kelly, based on what I've heard about the incident that Ms. Perry described, I think it would be really awesome if your deputies took a couple extra laps down Stratton Place on that evening, because the last thing I want to see is mortars pointed at a home.
For sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sergeant Walker? Hearing done, we'll move on to Law Director, Mr. Boggs.
Okay, so I'm going to address fireworks ordinances. I already did that. I'm pretty happy. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I do have a request for executive session at the end of this evening's meeting.
Thank Mr. Shamp for his diligent research on that for us.
Will do, and I'm going to distribute that to the balance of council.
I do have a question there on the fireworks as well. If a person was to, let's say, you weren't able to be there at that time, which it is impossible to be, usually taking a report after something's happened, but would behoove someone to, how much would that stand up if someone was to record where that's coming from by video camera and then turn that in? Would that be a deterrent? Would that hold up to a violation?
So I'll, I mean, I'll address it from the prosecutorial standpoint, and then I'll let Sergeant Walker address it from the actual policing standpoint. Video evidence is admissible in court. We would still need the person who took the video to be able to testify to its authenticity as well as what they observed themselves. So you could move forward on a case with that type of evidence without needing the police officer's direct, or the deputy's, direct observation of the fireworks, but anyone who wants to do that, the video needs to clearly get where these fireworks are originating, what property, you know, date, time, all of these things, because the challenge, I think, for a person trying to videotape them is they see them in the sky, and you may not be able to get a clear picture of where they are originating. That may not be the case in the woman's example from earlier, but you definitely need to have the ability to connect it to at least a property so that you can charge that property owner potentially.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boggs. Next is Finance Director, Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Milken. I don't have anything in addition to my written report this evening.
Questions for Mrs. Jackson? Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. Public Service Director, Mr. Peoples.
Thank you, Mr. Milken. My apologies for not having a written report. I get a little tied up on Friday with the pool and the water plant, but Mr. Shea, Mrs. Amos, I don't know if you want to discuss the Ms. Marion's comments or wait for old due business. Up to you.
I mean, we're always willing to talk about it. We had a great walk. We did the downtown area, Mr. Peoples made himself free, and we joined Ms. Marion and Mr. Shea and I, and we walked around. There are a lot of broken curbs, there's a lot of sidewalk issues where it's starting to stink in a little bit. The downtown area, we keep hearing everybody that talks about how attractive downtown is, how we want to keep it beautiful, how this is the center, the heart of our town, is that downtown area. So we did walk through and looked at a lot of places that we could make modifications, and Ms. Marion pointed out exactly, it requires money, but it is, would be money well spent in keeping our downtown area preserved. So it's something that Mr. Shea and I were kind of floating some ideas around, and we'll continue floating ideas around, but we had talked about some of the community benefit money that we may be saying from some of these organizations could go towards revitalization of downtown. We talked about potential bed tax money because that is bringing tourists into our town. And Mr. Peoples pointed out the fact that we, one of the hardest parts is that if we have something we want to do, it's not as easy to find a contractor who can go in tomorrow to do it. They bid out a lot of these projects, and so some of them are just not feasible within the current year, but he did listen to a lot of them and kind of took notes on some things that we might be able to modify in the future, and some minor projects that we could address right now. So I will say a big thank you to Mr. Peoples and his group, because they did go out and fix the cliffhanger that was out in front of Corner Smith's. You know, you walk them every single day, and sometimes you just don't see them. But Patrick said it best, he says, once you see them, you can't unsee it, and so I'll let you kind of pick up from there.
Well, I'd like to start off and thank Mr. Peoples, one, because he's a man of action. It was less than 24 business hours after we had met with him, and there was action happening down there. There was men that were on his team down there with Roundup spraying the weeds that had grown up through the cracks in the sidewalks and the curbs, just to clean it up a little bit. And then a week after that meeting, they were out there fixing a very labor-intensive problem, but man was out there and dedicated to it. So I'd like to thank him for the prompt response, the incredible service he gives to the residents of this community, and we're very lucky to have him. And I also want to thank him for being willing to listen to various ideas, even when they feel crazy, when I said, let's do, you know, an arched reef from Corner Smith's to Harvest Moon, and he said, as long as you come up with the money, we can do it. So we're looking for that money, but I think we're all in agreement that downtown is a very special, charming place, and we want to protect it as much as we can and keep it as beautiful as we can. I did notice some more of the 1828 signs that popped up over the week, thank you for that. It just all helps to kind of fill in and add to that charm down there, and it is absolutely the asset, the gem of our community, and I think we would do well to take very, very good care of it. Not that we haven't been, but just to keep an extra eye on it. So I'd like to thank Mr. Peoples and his staff for just absolutely doing a bang-up job. Thank you.
You're welcome. The crews, most of the stuff that we did talk about is on our annual list anyway, with the wet spring that we had, mowing kind of took over, and it was growing quicker than we could cut it, so some of that stuff did take a little bit of a backseat, you know, and as you said, you kind of look at it every day, and it's not that big a deal. One of the biggest things is that the tripping hazard that was there, that was one of the bigger things that we caught. And then there was a little landscape area that hadn't been landscaped or weeded, it kind of got forgotten. So it was nice to be able to see those things with, like I said, a different lens. You know, we've talked internally about the downtown. For the last couple of months, we've had a lot of people telling us that 33 is our identity, and I've never, ever thought that, it's always been about downtown. You know, the brickwork that we're looking at out there, it's from the early 90s, so it's seen its age. We've had a couple of projects over the years where we replaced a little bit of brick out in the center through our annual street program, but, you know, a lot of that stuff, when we talked about this, is, you know, there's a canal boat down there, but in, within the brickwork, there are, no one can really know, can see what that is. Even on the aerial photos, if you look at those, you really can't see what is going on. Most people think it's their crosswalks in there. You know, there's another, there's another one that is, that is the old rail line, and, you know, by no means am I saying anything about the historical significance of those two things, it's just, you know, those aren't as attractive as what they could be, or what they were before. So we've had this on our list, on our CIP, it's, you know, what to tackle first is a big problem. You know, we do have some, when we're talking about the downtown, the crosswalks, Ms. Marion said that, you know, those are a little bit difficult because that might get into some ADA compliance issues as we start to work on those. I think we reported, I said something about that when she was in here the last time. So those might be a little bit more major. You know, the brickwork out in front of 10 North High Street, you also, that's all cracking up, and it's ready to go, so, you know, go on and start to tackle these things rather than trying to program them in along with our street program to do all of this all at once. You know, we've talked about, you know, trying to break some of this up and doing, you know, some of this brickwork may just get replaced by concrete in the sidewalk areas especially. It'll freshen up. I like the brickwork, you know, and it has lasted very well, so, but, you know, some of the aesthetics you lose with that brickwork. So I think it's a balancing act on how we do that. You know, definitely in the downtown, we have a lot of small, different issues just because of the age of the infrastructure, so looking at that and maybe just trying to take on bits and pieces of it, as the worst part of it, it might be the best way to go on it rather than a wholesale change, which I couldn't even tell you how much that would, that would cost.
Did you make any observations of an area that might just be a community call to action? Maybe a particular area that needs just simply some weeds pulled, or anything that just community residents could get involved in?
I don't think, I did not. Mainly what we saw was structural things that just need to be addressed, you know, and again, some of them, the urgent ones, the street crew and Mr. Peoples was able to get addressed rather quickly. Broken curbs, identifying crosswalks. As we become more pedestrian-friendly and as our city grows and we see a larger number of people downtown, it's going to become vital that we identify those crosswalks. So I know that's a huge one for us, but I would love to take volunteers somewhere, I just don't know that it was down there yet.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So, I mean, we really do think the focus is downtown. I mean, obviously this building, we wanted this building to be downtown, to stay in this area, to keep the traffic going. You know, Mr. Hare, the legislation's on here for purchase of the McClure Building, which I think as he stated at the presentation that he did, presenting the ordinance last week, is, you know, taking that drop curb out of there and actually putting in a curb, we can actually put in a real crosswalk there if we kind of program that the right way, maybe have a little bump out so it's not as long of a walk, and, you know, there's a couple of different things that we can do along with that, but, you know, and then, you know, we have a whole downtown plan as well. Now, it doesn't address the specific, the infrastructure and the crosswalks, but, you know, the intent, you know, a project we've been talking about for years and years and years is that railroad overpass. There's a plan in the downtown plan to kind of at least do some landscaping of the abutments and that type of thing, you know, while not addressing the actual, the physical structure itself of the overpass. I mean, that is in there. You know, we've had a volunteer, unfortunately, almost hang himself out there trying to work on that bridge, and, you know, but getting those, you know, getting the plan implemented, that's where, when we talked, it's very difficult to, you know, we have all of these roadways out there from our subdivisions that are getting this 20 years old, and are time to get, this is when it gets programmed, where we're doing some maintenance on them and spending some money and pulling that out. Director Jackson said something about, I think we had a million dollars in there in the street CIP this year, you know, being able to pull this out, still maintaining our streets, but filling this in. You know, it's difficult to just to program that into the annual way to do stuff like that.
So I guess I'm a little confused about what you're really looking for downtown? Because last year, last fall, previous council said get rid of all the bricks, put concrete down or pavement. Is that what you're still looking for?
Well, and we did talk about that with this, Mr. Peoples, is figuring out, is the brick the best solution in order to identify crosswalks? Because, you know, I'd asked him, can we paint the bricks to clearly identify the crosswalks? And, you know, he had made the comment that it won't stay on there long, it wears off very quickly, so it's not really a feasible option, we'd be doing it over and over and over. That's not what we want to spend our time doing. So to your point, Mayor, it's deciding viscally what's the best option for us to get the, you know, the nicest look, but be able to get the pedestrian-friendly, to be able to identify just the different things on the street. I mean, my favorite was the stop bar. We're standing there at the corner, and a car pulls up, and Mr. Peoples looks and goes, that's the stop bar. And it's bricks in the road, but there's like two car lengths, and all of us do it, we all sit back at this one part, and he goes, yeah, that's the stop bar. But it's not identified. It is, but not many of us know it. So, I mean, we're going to take a lot of Mr. Peoples kind of giving us some guidance on this, because he's the one who helps plan a lot of the road improvements and giving us the best suggestions, so we'll look at it and go from there and see what you guys think.
And just a thought, too, instead of getting rid of all brick, maybe you would have brick bordering concrete, or, you know, to give it a, to keep the brick look, but now you have a border.
So you can get that good rough ride then.
We still, I mean, Mr. Peoples pointed out, the town, the center where the circle is, I mean, it's very pretty, and it's well-maintained right now. Is that something, you know, is it something long-term we can keep, or is it something that needs to go away as we start looking at, you know, traffic safety, pedestrian safety? It's something we'll have to figure out.
And is the plan to keep the shape, the outline where it is in front of Stradling that you were talking about as far as the canal boat? You want to keep that, right?
I don't know. I mean, just because, you know, you have to point it out to people to see what it is, it's not, it's just not that evident, so, but, you know, it does signify our history. So is there something else that we can do that would kind of demonstrate the history along with it, but maybe in a different fashion that we have? And, you know, just trying to put our heads together and figure out what that might be able to be. You know, we did talk about the arch over, I mean, there's, you know, there's a lot of, I mean, we, down at the end of, at the dead end of High Street, as you're coming down through there, there used to be telephone poles on either side, and we used to string banners across there. So that was, I mean, we always had the Labor Day banner up there, and then there was one out on West Waterloo Street right around Pfeiffer Drive. Well, as we do our improvements, those old wooden telephone poles go down, and now we don't have anywhere for those, they were huge banners that went across there, and, you know, you could do a lot of advertisement with that. So, you know, those are the type of things that we kind of lost with, as we kind of went through some of the improvements over the years, and, you know, maybe trying to figure out how to get something like that back, you know, get a, you know, the centerpiece type of thing, and South High Street does just seem to be that centerpiece. You know, we, you know, there's, the downtown plan has kind of, I'll call it redevelopment of Stradling, where, you know, we relocate the green space from out in the back, make out a parking lot, move that up into the front, do away with the fountain, which is also showing its age. You know, as far as lights go, is the electric in there, the pumps and all the lines, it's a arduous task in the spring for Joe at the water plant and his crew to get that up and running. It's coming more and more difficult every year, it seems like, so, you know, looking So, you know, looking at something like that, um, you know, I think Stradling is great. I mean, the, the plan, uh, for that as well and the downtown plan looks, looks awful nice as well.
I think there's a lot to, to chew on there. I don't think we're going to solve any of these issues this evening. I will just echo that I think all of us have probably had conversations with you at some point about pedestrian safety, so I think that should be, uh, priority number one. Um, my only other question was just a quick one. Somebody mentioned, um, the, I think it might have been Carm, the flower basket, the hanging baskets. Um, I meant to ask this last time. Destination was asking about those, uh, not being hung up in time for the art stroll. Um, is that a, um, just a time of year kind of thing? Where the, it's not, why is it planned? I'm not a, I don't have a green thumb.
Uh, we had the potluck for them, it was in late April or early May, so, I mean, yeah, first week, I mean, it would have, they would have just been planted at that point.
Okay.
But part of the issue is frost.
That's okay.
You know, we're paying out to after the 15th of May. That's always been the...
Like I said, I don't have a green thumb. That's just something I told them I would ask because at their last meeting they were asking about it.
That's what I say when you use a bunch of dead flowers in a basket.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, cause we, I mean, we, we plant them all and just they set, set outside at the Public Works Complex and it usually is the, the first part of just, it's by, um, usually by Labor Day, right around Labor, or I'm sorry, Memorial Day, um, that they, they do get up, not just so they can sit there and on our, on our lot and grow. Uh, we don't have an indoor facility where a greenhouse type of thing where we can, we can put them and, and they can grow in the meantime. And we've, we have looked into some, uh, renting some space, I guess, um, that does get very, very expensive to, in order to do that like at Dills. Um, we, we've worked with them, uh, asked them to try to get them, uh, get them going, but, um, you know, it just becomes very, uh, expensive to do that.
Yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Peoples?
I, uh, I have a couple of quick things. So, Mr. Peoples, I suspect you're going to tell me to be patient, but is there, um, any movement in the track process at this point in time? And also, uh, secondary to that would be the Gender Road Phase Six. Any movement on either one of those efforts?
Uh, not on track. I mean, they, they have a process. Um, I, I don't have that, I, I have September that there's going to be preliminary results, um, but they're going through the applications now. Uh, we've not heard from ODOT that there was any questions, uh, that came out of that, but, um, uh, I'll make sure to put that in my written report next time on the timeline, uh, on what to expect. Uh, and then, uh, Gender Six, uh, we did have a discussion with, with ODOT. Um, it was an odd conversation, I will say that, cause they, I think as I reported at the last meeting, um, they gave us direction to use the, um, systematic safety funding, uh, and I'm not sure how all of this plays into each other. They have safety funds and then they have systematic safety funds. Um, so they, they were, their, their main concern with, um, with our application through the systematic, um, was that it would require an interchange operation study. Uh, so if, if you think about our, our, our application, uh, we were going to take, instead of having the loop on, um, a continuous loop for northbound Gender Road to westbound 33, uh, we were actually going to take all of the traffic and go up to the, to the traffic signal that is existing on the north side of, of the bridge, uh, and it was going to be a continuous right-hand turn, uh, you know, on the loop unless there was a pedestrian there and it would be controlled by a, a push button. That would be the only time there wouldn't be a continuous right-hand turn, uh, to get on to 33. That, in ODOT's eyes, that would have required a interchange, uh, operation study, uh, to go along with that. Since we did not have that, um, already done, uh, they were hesitant on that and then, and then they also said that they were hesitant to fund it at the, they, they put a cap on the funding of $2 million, which is, that's what we requested, and they said that they were hesitant to fund at the cap. So I, I'm not sure why they would have a cap and not want to fund at it now, you know, other than the fact that our, our project was at the cap and the other ones that were funded were, uh, all, I think 1.2 million was, if I remember correctly, was the highest, uh, the next highest one that was funded. Um, so that, that could have been it. So, um, their, their recommendation was to, uh, apply for funding, um, through the traditional safety funds. Um, we, we did bring up that, you know, there's, we, we don't have a documented safety issue other than the fact it's not safe for pedestrians to walk along through there, but we don't have the crash data, uh, that is typically coincides with the safety, uh, program funding application. So, uh, but the, the good news is, is that it would then pay for the, the interchange operation study. So we got a couple of things working for us. Um, we can also, there, there was a, a discussion whether, uh, whether we leave the, the loop on there, uh, leave the continuous, uh, movement onto 33, uh, and, and put in a, a different traffic signal for that, which was head activated. Um, you know, there, there is one of those that, that in, uh, up at Cleveland Avenue, uh, going northbound onto 270, um, but we, when we, we did, um, uh, study that, but thought that the, uh, the, the right-hand turn was a, was a little bit safer movement than, than stopping, uh, all traffic going in with a, with a traffic signal in a, in a very odd place, uh, and then additionally that would cause a further backup, uh, down Gender Road.
Sergeant Walker, are you aware of any incidents of pedestrians crossing that, um, overpass of injuries or accidents or anything? I see kids riding their bikes, whether they're going to the pool or a school activity or whatever. I see people coming across there on their, with their wheelchairs. Are you aware of any incidents that have occurred?
Um, we've had quite a few in that area, not specifically where that ramp is, but we've had a few pedestrians struck, but, um, I mean, I think one that I remember was last year, a gentleman was struck, uh, but that was where you get off from 33 Eastbound onto Gender. It wasn't on the other side getting onto 33, so.
Patience, grasshopper.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples.
You're welcome.
Uh, Development Director, Mr. Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Milliken. Um, you, you may have saw the notice last week. We had to cancel our Planning and Zoning Commission. We had some illness-related issues that prevented us from having the quorum. Uh, we have rescheduled that meeting for tomorrow evening, uh, so we'll be in this room tomorrow meeting, uh, tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM for the, uh, June Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Uh, today was the deadline to apply for the, uh, July meeting. Um, we received a few applications, probably the one to note is the, uh, the final development plan for the shop property, um, so that'll be on for the July agenda for Planning and Zoning Commission. And, uh, with that, we happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. Excuse me. Um, we have no resolutions this evening, so we'll move on to ordinances. Uh, first item is ordinance 22 dash 015. Clerk, if you'd read that, please.
An ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Canal Winchester, rezoning approximately 80.402 acres of Franklin County parcel 181 dash 001377 owned by Harriet S. Baker Levin, located at 5700 and 5900 Winchester Park from Art Rule in Madison Township to LM Manufacturing.
The Chair would like to make a motion to untable ordinance 22 dash 015. Second. Motion was made, I'm sorry?
Can we have discussion real quick?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, may I ask you another question?
Yeah.
Thank you. The conservation area that you have, about 10 acres, is that permanently remaining a conservation area?
Yes.
The intention is to never develop that piece?
Yes, there always be construction there, or it's a green space.
Correct. And it'll be open to the public if, when the trails potentially, they could...
Yeah, we'll see to work on that actually, of course, because private properties with insurance issue, injury type issues, we need to figure out if we, if we need something to the Canal Winchester, which you guys could take ownership of, I think, it's, it's a public, uh, public space.
And I'll leave that up to the city to figure...
We'll, we'll figure it out, so.
Yeah. And then I know that currently you've made the modifications to the structure and that's what we're looking at tonight. The CRA would have the $400,000 that you're committing to the community reinvestment?
That's right.
The community benefit plan. Um, that is not what we're voting on. I guess I'm just looking for a verbal from you that is a commitment you're willing to make.
I have a motion on the floor to untable 22 dash 015 by the Chair and second by Mr. Shea. Roll call.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
No.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
The Chair would also like to make a motion to amend, uh, ordinance 22 dash 015 to the 620 addition.
Second.
Motion was made by the Chair, second by Mr. Shea. Roll call.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, does that, uh, need to be read? That 620 addition?
It, it is the version that is in your packet this evening, but because we're at third reading and prior versions were in prior packets, we're just, it's just, this is just a motion to amend so that you're formally on to what's reflected in your packet.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
And the Chair will make a motion to adopt ordinance 22 dash 015.
Second.
Motion was made by the Chair, second by Mr. Clark. Roll call.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
No.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Miss, sorry, Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Um, one final third reading this evening, ordinance 22 dash 021. Clerk, if you'd read that, please.
An ordinance to reappeal ordinance number 13 dash 43 and to amend section 951.03 regarding rules for parks, ponds, and leisure multi-use paths.
Sponsor's Mrs. Amos.
Thank you. Motion to adopt ordinance 22 dash 021.
Chair will second. Motion was made by Mrs. Amos, second by the Chair. Roll call.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ordinance 22 dash 023. Clerk, if you'd read that, please.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a real estate purchase agreement for the purchase of 20 South High Street, Canal Winchester, Ohio owned by Donald E. Moody.
That's second reading only.
Can, real quick, have we heard anything back on the land survey, when the estimated time for that is and figure out if we're going to have cost reductions?
Yeah, so the, the phase two environmental assessment should be done by the second week of July and the survey should be done around the end of the first week of July.
So are we delaying the third read on this?
Uh, we, we may want to do that, yes.
Okay.
But you know that puts us into August, right?
Yes.
Okay. Will your purchase contract allow it?
It does.
All right. Ordinance 22 dash 025. Clerk, if you'd read that, please.
An ordinance approving and adopting the 2023 tax budget.
And the sponsor's Mrs. Ward.
Second reading only.
Thank you. And council reports, uh, our next work session and council meeting, uh, with the addition of a public hearing, correct, Mrs. Jackson?
Correct.
Um, Tuesday, July 5th at 6:00 PM. Uh, work session council Monday, August 1st at 6:00 PM. Work session council Monday, August 15th at 6:00 PM. CW Human Services, Mr. Walker.
Okay, I have a few things. Uh, Leitha Mullins, the Director, uh, has given me some information. Uh, they have put up a food blessing box up at the facility to give others a different avenue to, uh, receive food. Uh, this is great since they are not, uh, they're on the weekends and can still access the food and they are seeing an increase of new clients using the food pantry. Um, also Brock Walk brought in 25,121 items? Wow, okay. Uh, 25,121 items, three exclamation marks. This be last year's total and we appreciate all the community support. Um, also senior transportation is getting busier and busier. Uh, they have tried, uh, hired a new driver, uh, Dan Martin, to help fill the seniors' needs for transportation. And, um, that's all I'll, uh, share at this moment then.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Uh, CW ICC, Mrs. Ward?
Uh, the next meeting is June 29th at 11:30.
And CW JRD, Mrs. Amos and Mr. Shea.
We are, uh, we had our meeting last Thursday. There is lots of, uh, sports activities going on, which is awesome. We are getting ready to post our job position for what used to be our, um, what used to be our director, but now will be like an assistant. Uh, so we're going to be posting that here soon, um, just revamping the job posting a little bit since we're, obviously our director has taken on a large chunk of our role, so. And then, um, I think, anything else I forgot?
Just that swimming is going swimmingly?
Well done. That's very funny.
All right.
Yeah, all good in our row.
Thank you. Uh, Destination's the Chair. Farmers Market reminder every Saturday, uh, follow, uh, on the Facebook page for the Farmers Market. Uh, they post on there, uh, every Friday what the vendors are going to be. Uh, we're a month and a half away from Blues and Ribs Fest, right? Um, check up Facebook page for that as well and any updates. Um, Karen wanted me to let, uh, you all know that the Amish doughnut people will be there again. I guess that's a big hit.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's all for Destination. Um, old and new business?
Mr. Milliken, if I may. Mrs. Amick has asked that we schedule a Rules Committee meeting for the, um, first meeting in August, so August 1st, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, for those of you who are on the Rules Committee, just want to make sure that that works for you. Uh, we would probably do it prior to your work session, um, so I'm not sure, 5 o'clock, um, if everyone who is on Rules Committee is good with that, we will get that advertised, so.
Yes, good.
I can just say I, I'll do my best and it's, it's early, so I'll, I'll do everything I can to be there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, old and new business, um, I just had one quick thing. Uh, Mr. Clark and I were talking earlier today, uh, we didn't recall seeing, uh, the bed tax ordinance on our agenda today and I, can we be reminded what our status is of that? Are we, are you waiting on us to come forward? That's what I thought. Okay, so I just wanted to bring up one kind of adjustment. My, I sat through and kind of hashed this out a little bit. Um, the, the original ordinance says 10% Historical Society, 10% CW ICC, 45 to Parks, 35 to Blues and Ribs and Labor Day respectively. Um, my tweak, I guess, would be, I would, I would like to see a stronger Chamber of Commerce, um, and maybe give them 10%. These are just, um, figures that I have pulled together, that we can adjust these, but, and, you know, maybe you all don't feel the same way I do, but, um, I would like to see some But I would like to see some money go towards the Chamber of Commerce. Labor Day's good. Mayor, you mentioned the bicentennial coming up. I think if we take parks down to 30%, move bicentennial to 15, and maybe kind of right in there, some kind of stoppage point. Obviously, we don't need to fund the bicentennial after 2028. And I guess my question on that one would be, you know, is that a, would that go into a separate fund, or is that earmarked within the bed tax?
We would probably just leave it in the bed tax fund and earmark it.
So yeah, that's, those were kind of my thoughts. We don't have to make any decisions tonight, I don't think, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
So, Mr. Milliken, to your point, one of the things we had talked about was with bed tax grants, potential for facade grants?
Yeah.
For our downtown businesses and the two, because one of the things Mr. Peoples pointed out was sidewalks are actually the responsibility of the business owner in front of them, or behind them, I should say. So repairing, like, we did find some damaged sidewalks that didn't meet what the city would say is enforceable, but definitely could have been redone, modified to look better. But we had talked about some facade grants potentially for, like, awnings and different things that, you know, would help the downtown area put back into their own businesses to also help keep the beautification process going.
That is something we've done through the CW ICC previously, so.
And I don't think they do it anymore, because I think I asked last time, and they said they haven't done them in years.
It's been a couple of years at least, right?
I think 2018 was the last round that we did.
And maybe the CW ICC, Ms. Ward, maybe that's something you can bring up with your group to see if there's any money that they want to do the facade grants again, or maybe we'll look at it in the bed tax. But just a thought, if we're asking, if, you know, we're asking the city to help put some things into it, it'd be nice if we're asking the businesses to do stuff as well.
So they do have $10,000, and Lucas is putting together a plan for that right now?
Perfect, thank you.
And if we, and if we got the extra 10% added up, that could go to the, so that's what, yeah, for more facade, that's what my thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking, if we did a 50/50 program, it'd be amazing what some of these businesses could do with a little.
Yeah, it was highly successful last time. I mean, we had quite a few applications.
And that's one of the things Ms. Marion said when we were walking around. She was like, it would be great if businesses mulched in front of their thing, you know, like, they're helping bring the beauty in, so.
That's good. Mr. Shea?
I know that half of that has to go to
Destination.
Destination. But the other half of it, I would rather see us than do blanket percentages with a pot of money that continues to grow every year to fix dollar amounts so that we're not giving funds away car wash. And I just, I'd like everybody to chew on that. That's not a, it's just a thought, and then.
Where, then, so where does that, the other money then go? Just sit in a fund? I mean, how do you, because you don't know how much with a percentage, you, you divide the entire pot up, and then it goes to those groups out, broken out percentage-wise. So if you get down to a point where you say, you know, CW ICC can have 5,000, but their allotment at, at 10% would really be, um, yeah, like 15, where does that other 10 go to if they're maxed at 5?
Well, that's what, that's why I'm saying this, is that it gives us an opportunity to do, to serve more parts of the community with those funds than just blanket writing off, hey, here's a, here's a bucket of 50%, and we're going to divvy it up like this.
That's what we're trying to avoid by targeting this money more to, I think, what things we want to see than having these applications come in to do something that is, I think, sometimes pretty crazy on some of those applica, some of those applications that we get for $2,000.
Are the organizations that receive funds, are they required to give council a report of what they did with the money that was allotted to them?
Not, it would, not so much a report after they do an application of what they're going to do with the funds. And then it comes to a committee, the committee reviews it, and it's pretty much been like, because we've got so much money, it's just kind of a rubber stamp, everybody gets money. I don't think we've hardly turned anybody down, maybe a couple on technicality reasons, and it's, I think some of those are, to me, are not.
So what Mr. Clark is referring to is the bed tax grant program? And there is, excuse me, a reporting requirement after the completion of the project for those. Now, in the case of this draft ordinance that you're discussing and divvying up this money amongst other organizations, right now, there's no reporting requirement written into that ordinance. But that's something that, if council so desires, you know, they could ask them to come in and do a report, or provide a written report, or however you wanted to do it. But right now, the only program we have is a bed tax grant program, which requires an application and a report upon completion of the, of the activity, or whatever they did with it.
I think it's important, if we're going to provide this allocation of funds, for that organization to have a plan of how they're going to spend those dollars. And if they say, well, we're just going to take the money and then we'll figure out later in that particular year, could those funds have been better used by another organization that had a specific plan? So that's kind of where my head's at, is just have a plan. If you're, if you're going to receive this money, have a plan of how you're going to use it.
I don't have a problem. I think that's a good idea. I don't know. Problem at all with it?
We asked the $2,000 bed tax grants to give us a summary at the end of it. It'd be beneficial if we asked the other groups.
Yeah, there should be a follow-up, absolutely, if we're going to go with this.
But I think that council should probably be the ones reviewing those, because Ms. Jackson's reviewing all of them right now, and that's probably unfair.
I look at the bed tax grant applications, but I don't make the decisions. I just make sure that they actually follow the guidelines and then turn them over to you guys. I'm really just the check writer in that program, so.
I just don't want to add more burden.
And Mr. Shea, also, if I'm picking up what you're throwing down, the 25, we already take off, what, 25,000 off the top for the grant program? Correct me if I'm wrong, we can, we can always skim more, if you're wanting to hold it off, it's a wrong word, I'm sure, but if, if we wanted to put aside a, a specific dollar amount for what you're, more what you were looking for, we could still do the percentages. We can do that, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, but I understand that we're in a period of incredible inflation, but in addition to that, this bed tax revenue appears to be growing at a very fast rate. And we're giving, these numbers are going to get big quickly. And when you divvy them up amongst four or five organizations as percentages, you may be able to do more with that. We may be able to do more with that money, have more impact with that money. And I guess I'm just kind of trying to give it a second look or a different thing. I really like Mrs. Amick's suggestion of, like, a report
Yes.
back, because it would be good to know where this money's going. I mean, it's been collected as tax dollars, and we're spending it as tax dollars, and we're giving it away as tax dollars. So it would be good to make sure that we've got transparency on where those funds are flowing to and what's going on with them.
Right.
So devil's advocate to the exact amount would be, let's say we go into a recession, and we see less bed tax coming in. If we've set specific numbers, my concern is we've committed to certain numbers. We'd have to go through and change everything.
Well, what is everybody else doing in a recession? You tighten your belt.
I think, I think the good thing is, is we do look at this every year, right? So we can make adjustments as things change, but I, I really don't want, I, it wasn't my intent to go that far into this. We've got time. I mean, I just wanted to put that on your radar, and, you know, we'll just keep discussing it as we move forward this year. That's okay with everybody? Okay. Any other order of new business from anyone else?
I'm really concerned about our designated outdoor refreshment area. How are we making out on that?
So, right now, I talked to Mr. Hare, and right now, the, the mayor has asked that we hold off until beginning of the year. I'm, I'm not a fan. Part of the reason, I understand, is that there is a, our beer tent for the Labor Day Festival will not be able to get their licensing in time if we put the DORA in place, but I still feel that we should pursue it, knowing that it would happen after the Labor Day, so that it's in place before the end of the year. But I'm kind of want to gauge council on your thoughts on this, if you're thinking we need to hold off, or we, in my opinion, we've kind of held off for so long now, we really should be kind of going forward.
Sad, what's your liquor law knowledge?
Limited.
You got anybody at the firm who's got any liquor law knowledge, permit knowledge?
Yes.
Can you find out about what happens to that beer vendor if we start DORA? What happens to his ability to serve?
I will inquire.
My understanding, and maybe I've said it wrong.
It's a timing issue, so.
Check out Hasty Law. Those guys do a lot of work on that.
Temporary permit is required to be issued 30 days prior to the event. And so the period where the DORA could go into effect, the temporary permit application would need to be filed prior to that going into effect, so they wouldn't be eligible to have the temporary permit, have the DORA's designation on it for Labor Day, if we were to.
So he can still sell beer. You just can't walk out of the tent with it.
Correct.
But we'd still be in the process of getting our DORA passed.
Could, we could be, yes. If we didn't introduce it this evening, that's why we didn't introduce it this evening, to move forward, because it wouldn't have been in effect, and then it would have created confusion around Labor Day. And there's too much to do preparing for Labor Day, to have to place trashcans, place signs, get everything in place for that first event to be a Labor Day event.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So if DORA were in place before Labor Day, and Shades wanted to participate, you could go buy a drink from Shades and walk around with it. And the beer tent operator could still sell beer, you just couldn't walk around with the beer from the beer vendor. Is that correct?
No, the beer tent operator could allow the person to walk around the grounds. You can't go from Shades into the beer tent with the beer you bought in Shades, or vice versa, though.
Okay, but you can walk around with it.
But couldn't some simple signage make that possible?
I think, I think all this is why we should be waiting.
It's the law. It's, I don't care what town you're in, that's the way it is. You can't do it. You can walk, you could walk out of Shades with a beer, as long as it's in a cup.
Right.
That says DORA on it, and you could walk all up and down the street, but you can't not go into the beer tent, if there was a beer tent.
Right.
If they're selling beer. If the beer tent is there just to take your beer to, and enjoy, you can do that, as long as they're not selling beer in that beer tent.
But I think the, I mean, that's the rule, that's the standard rule anyways. You can't go from any establishment to another establishment. That's the standard rule of a DORA. So I couldn't go from Shades to Barrel &amp; Bore, no matter what, and it would be the same for the liquor license, for the, for the beer tent.
Right, so, so the only thing would be, if you bought a beer from the beer tent, you couldn't walk around with it, because that wouldn't be approved for DORA, but you could still buy a beer and hang out in that area.
No, you can buy a beer in the beer tent.
You just couldn't go to Shades, and you couldn't take a beer from Shades into the beer tent.
Well, how's that different than?
It's not different from the DORA, you're right.
Okay, so why would we delay it, then?
I would guess that the delay is because it's, it's completely 100% the discretion of Mayor Ebert whether we move forward, and he's chose not to move forward at this time.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't, like, an actual reason other than that.
No, I, discussions with the mayor, I think we're
We could.
moving it forward later this year, and so hopefully, we'll have that put together, and we'll bring it back later this year to be adopted and go into effect in January. For all the events next year.
What if we want to do it now? Are we working?
We don't have trashcan, we don't have, we don't have any hanging place. You got cups to order?
I mean, we have.
That ain't going to take.
So there is, after we do the reading, we have to do two readings, they're close to the newspaper, so it's about 90, 60 to 90 days before it takes place. So we have time to get some stuff, but we also, I mean, we're relying on the city to order stuff and, you know, for us, but, I don't know, I struggle. We, it seems like we just keep putting it off and off and off, and I really would love to see us
Well.
I know, you're not on board.
No, I'm not going to not on board. Don't blame me for it, because I waited a long time for an answer from you.
Right, on getting the research, yes. But now we've got it all ready to go, and I just, now we're delaying again. That's the.
If we were to put it in place now, if we started now, the only events listed are the two shop hops, the winter, the autumn and the winter shop hop that would be in effect for this year.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That would be a good small trial.
Yeah.
Very good. I'm just asking for you to consider, Mayor Ebert. I would appreciate it. We can have further comments?
It's not a matter of reconsidering, it's the timing.
I, I thought we were talking about doing it at Rib Fest and Labor Day.
Oh, Rib Fest, it's way too late.
Yeah, Rib Fest was never on the thing, but Labor Day was.
I thought it was, I thought we were going to try it at an event like that, to see kind of how it
Right.
played out, how it worked, and then kind of make a more of a decision.
I, I think that at this point, everybody in this room, I think, is for DORA. It's just a matter of the timing, right? And, you know, some people are comfortable with a certain timeframe, and others are comfortable with another timeframe, so at this point, I think we should just leave it at that. And, Ms. Amos, and if you and the mayor want to continue to work at it, I, I encourage that.
Yeah, I, and, and we will. I just, we had talked originally that it would be a great thing to start at a smaller event, and to me, the shop hops just seem like the perfect place for us to do it. So if that's the point we're at, where that's where it would kick in, would be around the shop hops? I mean, to the point of, that was the original conversation, is starting at a small event, I think we're right where we need to be.
So just out of curiosity, what if an ordinance was put forward to pass DORA, and it voted through council?
That's, that's where we started this discussion, was it last year or two years ago? And it ended with, it's still ultimately up to the mayor to move it forward, if I remember correctly.
Actually, I didn't hear your question.
So, my understanding, and Sad, please correct me if I'm wrong, so if an ordinance was passed by council, the mayor could veto it, but then council could overturn the veto. Is that correct?
That is correct. I think that where we, where we run into a limitation with respect to the DORA specifically is that it talks about the executive officer of the municipal corporation filing the application with the legislative authority. And by charter, the mayor is the executive officer of the municipal corporation, so we have a separation of power, legislative and executive issue.
So we could pass it, and then we could overturn the veto, but it'd be up to him to apply it for the application.
Correct.
Thank you.
My hope has always been that we are in sync with the mayor on this. I think this is a community decision, and so my hope is that, you know, and I'll follow up with you, Mayor, and we'll have additional conversations. But I, that's my hope, is that we're in sync. We can find a compromise.
There is incredible community support and requests for a DORA in the city of Canal Winchester. I rarely have a conversation in my community where I'm not asked about DORA. With everything else that's going on.
I'm disputing that. I'm disputing the timing of it all. That's the issue.
Why don't we want it for the small rollout for the autumn and the fall shop?
I mean, right now, Labor Day is up in the air. We're like, do we get a beer tent? Do we get a beer tent? Do we not get a beer tent? Do we get someone to sell beer? And knowing that they may sell beer and they may not, it's a costly thing to put up a beer tent. I mean, they have to, they have to purchase beer upfront. You have to buy your beer upfront. And you're looking at $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 just to do that. Then you got to put up your tent. The tent is 40 by 80. Now you're looking at another, about another $3,000. Then you got to get tables and chairs. Now you're looking at another $1,000, $1,500. So it's not easy to put up a beer tent for someone that we're trying to look for.
Is the concern that?
And not knowing, especially not knowing how it's going to be operated this year.
Is the concern with having a DORA in place for Labor Day that the beer tent, that we won't be able to find one who's willing to do it in the DORA, or that they won't make enough money to do it?
Combination of both.
Because the, it, the beer tent is the biggest, one of the biggest fundraisers for Labor Day, correct?
Nah, not really.
What's, on average, what do you make off the beer tent? I know it's probably.
We don't. We, Labor Day doesn't make a dime off the beer tent. It's the sponsor who runs the beer tent. Kingies is running. What they make, I have no idea. I've never asked. I don't really care, because they do it, they, they hire, they either bring in employees and pay them, or they try to get volunteers, which is hard to do, to work the entire weekend, because it's a holiday weekend. That's, that's the difference between Labor Day and Blues and Rib Fest. Blues and Rib Fest is not a holiday. Labor Day is, and we run into it every year trying to get volunteers to run a beer tent. Well, they don't want to be tied down because it's a holiday weekend, and everybody's home and they're wanting to party. Blues and Rib Fest, it's, it's not a holiday weekend, and they, they find volunteers much easier.
Sure. So if we don't get it in time for Labor Day, what's wrong with getting it in time for the autumn and the winter shop hops?
We may. I don't know. Luke, you think? Can or not?
Yeah, it's just a matter of timing, and whether we can get everything that's required to put those events in place. So their, their supply chain issues with everything, we have to get trashcans, we have to get signs.
That's true.
It's just a matter of getting all the things in place.
We're still waiting on handrails for the stupid park, and we, you know, how are we going to get trashcans? That's.
Well, I guess my request would be to start looking to see the timeframe on how long it would take to get some of those things. Originally, when I looked at all of it, I mean, I realized that was two and a half, three months ago, and we started talking about pricing. Everything was in stock that I verified, that I checked on. So I guess we could just check and see, is this feasible to put this through for the winter? That would be my ask.
Yeah, I think the intent was to bring it back to you in August and start the process then, because we know it's a 90-day process, and then get it into effect. So whether that's the December shop hop, or whether that's after the 1st of the year, I don't know when that'll be.
Okay. Well, I'll make an appointment to meet with you two, and we'll talk further. I would appreciate that.
Last call for order of new business. Okay, Chair would like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session to confer with the attorney for the city concerning pending or imminent court action.
Second.
Motion was made by the Chair, second by Mr. Shea. Roll call.
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Abstain.
Mrs. Amick?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.